Given the time, I am going to propose another reordering of the agenda. So we will reorder it so that the public hearing on wireless facility would be postponed, would be after... So, okay. The motion would be, we already have item 19 next, and then we will consider item 22 after the vision study. And then we would do the item 20 if we have time, and then item 22, item 21, the council procedures menu, which likely we won't get to. So the motion is to move item 22 right after item 19. I think that's the motion.
Just to clarify, Mayor, so it'll go 19, 22, 21, 20?
Oh, 20, 22, 20, 20, 19, 22, 20, 21.
Mayor.
Mayor, I'd love to make sure we get through item 20. We've been working on that for five years, so.
I know, that's why it's not really time sensitive. Last time I was thinking, oh, I've wanted to talk about transportation since May or earlier, so I wanted to get through it. So anyway, so I think that's not really time sensitive, and I want to get through the two transportation items today. So the motion is just to move item 22 to be right after 19, and then the others remain their order. That means 20 and 21 remain the same order. Okay?
21.
Is that clear?
Okay. More a second.
Yeah, so I know that we have been waiting to talk about the wireless item for years. It should have been come to the council last year or the year before, but if we do that, we might not get to the transportation matter again, and I really don't hate for that to happen, so, yeah. Okay.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, 19. So I think council member Mohan pulled the item. Would you like to state and make any comment before we?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this item was I felt we hadn't had a full discussion of this subject. It was sort of late in the evening, and I think you and I discussed it, and you said that we'd get another opportunity to talk about it at this meeting. So this is, that's why I would like a complete discussion.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that there has been a meeting of the steering committee since our last meeting, so maybe we can hear from staff, report from that, and then we can hear a report from our representative vice mayor on the steering committee. But should we go to public comment first before we do that? Yeah, I think, let's go to public comment first before we go to staff and vice mayor. And I hope that, given that we hope to, we can get through the two items, transportation-related items today, if you have made a comment last time on this item, I would hope you might choose not to make it again or make a very short comment, but I'm trying to not cut anyone's time for any item, so I'm not favoring any one item, so, but if everyone speak for three minutes, we might be here until midnight again. I hope we don't have that. Thank you. So, public comment.
Okay, yes, Mayor, for item 19, we have three requests in community hall and three requests virtually, so that would bring us to 18 minutes. Okay?
18 minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, see, that's already 18 minutes. So please, if you have made the same point last time, make it short.
So we have Emily Poon, followed by Harry Neal, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome.
Is the noise, is the voice right now, or is it too loud?
We can hear you fine.
Yes. Greetings, city council members. My name is Emily, and I have been a resident here for 18 years. The vision study was something I knew about only towards the end. It lasted for two years, and I observed the second last meeting as well, and then attended personally the very last meeting. From 2022 to 24, a series of meetings was held by the VTA and three cities, San Jose, Santa Clara, and Cupertino, to discuss how to improve traffic lanes on Stevens Creek Boulevard. A consultant company, Iteris, was hired at great expense to spread news among the public and held pop-up meetings and bus ride parties, et cetera. But somehow, the car dealerships in Santa Clara and San Jose did not seem to have been The consultants said, this is my assumption, that they had notified the car dealers through the Silicon Valley Auto Dealer Association, but did not hear back, and so assumed that the car dealerships were not interested in this study. So this is the most serious flaw about that vision study, that the stakeholders, who are the big businesses that we know about, were not included. But a lot of people did show up, from the photos that we see, they were doing all these dart exercises, et cetera, but not including the dealerships was a big flaw. Then the next point is, the three cities, the sections that were in the three cities are a little bit different. The center, the Cupertino part is really beautiful. It already was complete, as it had beautiful street trees and medians, and that was not emphasized, and we can't even see it mentioned in the consultant's study. But Vice Mayor did point this out, and she produced her own research, which was really solid, and in the 50 or 51 slides that she produced, we see a very clear photo of a big transporter vehicle in the median, in the center median of the section where the auto dealerships were. Now, this is important, because would you want to take out the space that was used for that parking and turn it into beautiful streets with a median? So that is my...
Thank you, that was your time.
Yes. Thank you.
Next, we have Harry Neal, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Harry.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Harry Neal. I am an organizer with TransBay Coalition and a member of VTA Citizens Advisory Committee. However, I am speaking for TransBay tonight. A coalition letter that I have submitted to you many times is the main focus of what I'll be saying. You know the contents of it already. We urge you to adopt the Stevens Creek Vision Study to help make all of our communities safer and more accessible for all. The signers on the coalition letter include TransBay Coalition, Friends of Caltrain, Catalyze Silicon Valley, multiple California State Assembly members showing up for racial justice in Santa Clara County, VIDA at Deansah College, Deansah College Zero Waste Club, Santa Clara County for Transit, the president of Deansah College, the chair of the Environmental Studies Commission, Environmental Studies Department at Deansah College, multiple small businesses along the corridor, including here in Cupertino, and multiple other local associations. But this project is so crucial, truly, it is. This project will guide not only improvements here in Cupertino, but across the entire corridor to downtown San Jose. For those concerned that Cupertino may lose some of what makes its section of Stevens Creek Boulevard great, don't be. This would be bringing the rest of the corridor up to Cupertino standards and pushing everyone together further for a better corridor. There's no downside to this, truly. The city has already made its conditions clear, and the other participating jurisdictions don't seem to have any problem with it. Please vote to accept the study. Thank you.
Thank you for not using the three minutes. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Harry. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Again, I'm so glad this is working well. Yes, we're back again at Stevens Creek Corridor Vision. I have attended probably 12 of these meetings, pop-ups, sit-down, go on a bus, et cetera, et cetera. They've been very enlightening. I have lived along the corridor for way further than I even admit, since the 80s, and it's very, very important, especially since my neighborhood, Rancho Rinconada, is at the intersection of Santa Clara and San Jose. We're at the border at Lawrence. And whatever happens on Stevens Creek Boulevard is very, very important to vehicle, yes, and bike traffic, walking, et cetera, but there already is so much demand. There's something called an over-demand of resources. Everybody wants something out of Stevens Creek Boulevard. They want lanes. They want to put in bicycle medians. They want to put in fixed bus rapid transit down the middle of it. It's not big enough, okay? If you go back and look at El Camino Real in 1770, it was a donkey track that the Padres went up and down on. Stevens Creek Boulevard is a little younger than that. You know, Mr. Stevens was going out to his home, his rattlesnake dinners, but everybody wants a piece of it. It's like that old Star Trek episode where you want a piece of the action. It ain't gonna happen. You've got to, we have to be careful of our resources. And I will tell you, I am not willing to give away pieces of that roadway. We have SB 79. We have people who want to take over a lane for buses. We have people who want to have flying cars and dig holes under it. It's like I have never in my life seen a roadway so contested. It was once a dirt road that the families would take milk to market in San Francisco on. It's just a road, but we have to make sure that we don't impede the traffic on it, and that's what I'm really concerned about. I do, I do not want one lane of it sacrificed to buses. I went to San Jose State, and it took me an hour, and that was fine for me. And I think students are being very picky and demanding if they think they can get there faster, because I guess they're better than me. Let's, don't do BRT on it. Let's not cut our trees down. And what about San Jose State?
Thank you, Jennifer, that was your time. Next, we have Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Luis.
Excuse me, I just, I'm just surprised that my time came up so quickly. I just need to increase the font on this so I can read it, because I just got new cataract lenses in, and...
Do you want to, maybe someone else can speak first?
Okay, I don't know how I got there first. Okay, I just put it in my thing. So somebody else can speak first.
Okay, Mayor, we would move to those speakers requesting to speak virtually. So we have Babu Srinabasan, San Rao, Betsy Magus, and Michael Wang. Welcome, Babu.
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak on this. I missed the last meeting.
You need to speak a little closer to your mic.
Okay, is it better now? This is the maximum sound.
Still very light.
Okay. So my only thing is...
Okay, better.
When our vice mayor has clearly said the study is not in favoring for Cupertino, and with the facts, with the slides, with the details, why even we are continue to review or talk about this subject in the interest of Cupertino? Because when the past history from other counties have shown, they just pull around with projects and they fail miserably, why we need to be part of this project? Why we are spending our taxpayers' money in this adventure? And second thing is, when we are talking about transportation of future, I would say, what about the transportation of present? When I drive my kids to drop at school in the morning, especially for the last, after the summer holidays, they started digging the roads in Rainbow Drive, and the steel plates, they were left with a notice saying that there are steel plates ahead. The damage that it does to the cars that is going there, I highly doubt anybody reported so far, and it is very unpleasant, and it is very, not a healthy level to drive in the morning, especially to drop kids in the, after this desolation come in. And with all these movements, it is becoming horrible in Rainbow Drive. And when we are not having a connection from city of Cupertino to any of the transit center, you can go from Deansah College Transit Center anywhere, you can go from Sunnyvale Caltrain Station to anywhere, but going to that place is making hours. It is not even we are ready for this project. I would suggest try to handle the issues that is with right now contesting with the bike lanes and removal of lanes in Deansah and the commuters, especially with people coming back to work in person. All these traffic issues, let us concentrate on the present and improve our people to go to office and come back to home in a peaceful way without this traffic jam. I would appreciate that, and I would say simply remove this agenda item from further discussion. It doesn't make any sense for us when we have the data saying that it is not favor for Cupertino. We don't need to go and put our head in the cutting line. Mayor Chow, I suppose you understand it better rather than me, and with all these discussions going for hour-long and day-long, night-long, I expect you make a better decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have San Rao, and then we will move back to Luis, who is ready to speak. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm the chair of Planning Commission, but I speak on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident today. I attended the steering committee meeting on Friday, as I have done with most of these steering committee meetings in the past year or two, and I want to commend Vice Mayor Moore for doing a fantastic job. She makes the Cupertino residents proud. She clearly came prepared, and she probably over-delivered to an extent that none of the other representatives were able to comprehend what was presented. That was the depth of detail there. I am very concerned about the structure and process around this corridor study. It appears that now that we're past the consultant phase and we're past hearing updates and so on, that the members, the agency reps of the respective agencies are voting on motions, and it's unclear to me how they can vote on motions, because for any action proposed by a motion, that really needs the approval of the backing agency's majority vote. So for example, Cupertino Council has to vote on the item in order to be able to approve the rep to speak on that item. And so when I see a motion and deliberations without any of that, it is unclear to me how that is happening. Further, when the motion passes, but a city or another agency voted against it, it is unclear how that motion applies to that city. For example, the vice mayor abstained or voted no on proceeding further, but was basically faced with the motion that passed because other agencies voted for it. So what does that mean for Cupertino? I'm extremely concerned that this project is really all about VTA. I have started to look at this in good faith as a project that really improved the corridor, but I've come to the conclusion that all of this project is really about VTA, and furthermore, the VTA is really a conduit to SB 79. And I urge you to look at specifically the definition of BRT. BRT is either a combination of frequency of service or a combination of features that are offered. In particular, if a service line offers a combination of transit signal priority, auto boarding, fare collection with efficiency, and stations, then that is considered a BRT, even if the frequency is not at the defined threshold. As you can imagine, this corridor project will advance these features on behalf of the VTA and will render SB 79 into the SEB corridor. So really, what this project about is not about signage, it's not identity or maintenance or medians or street trees. This is about bringing high density to the SEB corridor. I urge you to reject and exit the study. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we will go to Luis Sedadi, who is now ready to provide comments.
And city council members, please vote yes on the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study. This is a joint project by Santa Clara, Cupertino, San Jose, VTA, and the county to study and make recommendations for the safety along the Stevens Creek Boulevard. Cupertino needs to approve without non-essential time-consuming additional procedures. Please approve the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study to be included in the conversations and decisions made by these cities and the county. This is to improve the safety for all of us, whether on transit, driving, biking, or walking. The recommendations need to go end-to-end, including all the way to Foothill Boulevard, where all the residents travel to and deserve optimal safety. Cupertino is the last city to give their approval to this vision. Cupertino's approval of the results of the vision study will make it easier for the cities and entities to receive current approvals to approve that corridor. Staff time is precious and limited and should be used judiciously. Thank you for supporting the vision study by voting yes with fewer contingencies and less time-consuming expensive procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And now we will move to the two remaining members of the public requesting to speak virtually, Betsy Magus and Michael Wang. Welcome, Betsy.
Good evening, Betsy Magus, Santa Clara resident, speaking for myself. I've made several of these points before, but you're here again, so I'm here again. Please adopt the vision study for Stevens Creek. The drivers will be just fine. The car dealerships will be just fine. It's everyone outside of cars that's barely being served here so far, even in Cupertino. This is a huge roadway, and it's dedicated almost entirely to cars. There's room enough for all of us. The Stevens Creek Division Study is the product of a robust community involvement process across all of the cities this corridor serves. Please adopt it and work to move people, not just cars. Please build for the future, not the past. You've done more than some of the other agencies involved to accommodate bicycles, and I appreciate that, but there is plenty more to do. Please continue to improve and to lead the way. And on an administrative note, I can barely hear anybody on the dais tonight. I can hear others online just fine, so please continue to work on your sound system in this room. Thanks.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Michael Wang. Welcome, Michael.
Hello, City Council. I just want to say, please vote to accept this corridor study. We've been talking about this for a long time, so I just want to get this out of the way. As for why Stevens Creek Commission is going ahead and voting on stuff, without us, we haven't voted to be a part of this group. So I don't, they're not going to wait for us to work on their part of Stevens Creek Boulevard. So, you know, their part's going to change, and our part's going to stay the same, and if we don't want that, then we should vote to approve this. You know, additionally, people are talking about, oh, you know, SB 79, if we approve this, it's going to affect our city. I'm pretty sure that no one has suggested BRT in any way for this line. There's a difference between, you know, dedicated lanes and BRT. I mean, it might seem a bit esoteric, but you know, for lawyers and legislators, there is a difference. And I might be misunderstanding SB 79, but I've heard that only designs that are at 100% design actually count for SB 79. So if that's true, then this doesn't even apply in the first place, you know, BRT or light rail or whatever. So the SB 79 argument holds no water. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Mayor, that is our final speaker for this item.
Okay, thank you. It's 9:42. Now we will go to staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. I do not have a presentation, but I will provide a little bit of background to this item, and then hand it over to David Stillman, as well as Matt Schrader, who is virtual, who can provide a little more detail on an update on the meeting from last Friday. But just a little bit of background, you all did hear this item on September 3. At that meeting, staff has provided direction to utilize one of the draft resolutions that was provided by the mayor and to add very specific items that were listed out by the vice mayor. Staff has attempted to take that information, compile it into one resolution. I'm hoping we met what you guys were looking for on that, and that's what's being presented tonight. I'm going to hand it off to David and Matt. I know there was some questions about getting an update on what happened last Friday, and Matt Schrader, who's online, was there, and he can provide you what he...
Yeah, thank you, Chad. So as mentioned, the steering committee met last Friday. Staff presented to the steering committee just a brief overview of the project, where the various jurisdictions stand with their adoption processes, and then kind of a high-level description of what a work scope would look like for next steps. Specifically, the proposal was to bring to the steering committee a study scope for complete streets design and potential funding opportunities to pursue that, what a transit signal priority update could look like, and then how to continue coordinating with the partner agencies to kind of address issues like maintenance and how to integrate project delivery. And then the steering committee passed a motion, kind of directing staff to move forward with that and come back with that complete streets work scope, as well as possible grant opportunities that could cover the cost of that project.
We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. On...
Thank you. Maybe we hear from the Vice Mayor first before Councilmember asks questions.
You're welcome to go to the questions first from Councilmember Mohan, if you want, or?
Okay. Yeah, so then we first go to question for staff. Any question for staff?
Sure.
At the end of last week's meeting, we talked about, we, we had a discussion on the final resolution which we, which we were going to approve, which, and the resolution was a sort of a combination of the mayor's points, as well as the Vice Mayor's. And although your staff report talks about the Bike Pad Commission recommendations, as well as the Planning Commission, I didn't see it unless I'm, I'm missing it. And, and you just mentioned a minute ago, Director Mosley, that you would include the recommendations of both those commissions. Is that right?
My understanding was we were going to be taking the mayor's, the direction that, and how I interpreted it was that we were going to take the mayor's resolution and incorporate that list of items that the Vice Mayor provided. That was my understanding from that meeting.
Yeah, and if I can may answer that, if, if you look, I wish that my draft resolution was included in today's agenda, but it's from the September 3rd agenda. In my draft, every item I have in there, I have commented on whether it's from the staff resolution, and most of the facts are. And I have added the fact that Cupertino already are implementing the Vision Zero Plan, Safe Roadway Plan, and then all the bike path plan we already have. So I added those things I would note added. And then also the items there, if some, I included all of the points from the Bike Pad Commission, so I have also noted when an item is from Bike Pad Commission. I actually did not include any of the items from planning. I think they're upset because I thought they, they are, they were making comment about, like, street scap, which I didn't think is core to the Vision Study. So, but every point that I've made in that draft is, is in, I did note where it came from. And, yeah.
Yeah, so my, my comment was about the Planning Commission. I, I know the Planning Commission approved, one of the things they approved was limiting the Stevens Creek Vision Study to Stevens Creek up to 85 or above road. And I know there was some discussion at the Planning Commission, but I, in my opinion, Steven, the Vision Study has to be extended all the way up to Foothill, which is how the original resolution was laid out. And I think, Mayor, you were one of the people who signed off on it. The Vision Study did not sort of get arbitrarily cut off.
So like I said, my resolution did not include that from the Planning Commission.
Right, no, but I'm making the point that the Planning Commission recommendation sort of truncates the Stevens Creek Corridor up to Bub and Stevens Creek, which, to me, did not make sense. And was there a reason, oh, that, that I'm missing? Why, why did that happen? And?
I think maybe you didn't misunderstood me. So my draft resolution did not include the Planning Commission's recommendation to truncate. So that means the, the resolution in front of us would mean that we are extending to footway, Foothill.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yes, that's correct. The, the council at the last meeting where we, this was discussed, did, did not support that recommendation from the Planning Commission to stop the corridor study at Bub Road. And so that was not, that, that limit was not incorporated into, into the mayor's draft resolution, nor was it included into the, the resolution before you this evening for your consideration.
Okay, so then the assumption is that it isn't there.
They will, they will continue all the way to Foothill.
Great, thank you very much. That's all I needed to know, Mayor.
Great. And any other question for staff? Councilmember?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fulan, is it? How come I don't see who raised the hand here? I think home. Okay, and Councilmember Fulan, yeah.
So, based on the conversations that I've had in reaching out to other members of the Steering Committee, I, I have concerns as to whether our agency partners will actually be okay with the types of conditions that we are choosing to try to impose here. Do we think that they will actually want to continue to work with us if this is the resolution that we passed tonight?
That may be a little speculative on our end to, to know that. What we can do as staff is to take these recommendations and make sure that they are mentioned during various meetings when we are discussing items of, of this concern.
Okay, so just on a staff-to-staff basis, what, what's your sense?
If I may speculate, my sense is that they, they will be okay with the resolution as proposed this evening and continue to work with us as partners.
Okay, all right. I, I hope that's true.
Any other, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So at the Friday meeting, it was mentioned that there were bylaws that were passed for the Stevens Creek Corridor Committee, and I had not seen them before. So did, were those ratified by the, by the City Council? Were those, you know, put on consent at some point? Because there's some things in the bylaws that are kind of troubling, and I would have wanted to, to see them. So they, they were passed in June of 2023. And one of the, the issues that I have is, you know, simply the, who's going to be on it? For instance, it's the number of members. Stevens Creek Corridor Steering Committee shall consist of members appointed from participating jurisdictions. The city, the cities of San Jose, Santa Clara, and Cupertino makes sense, but then also you have the County of Santa Clara and VTA and Valley Transportation Authority, though they're, they're voters. Members will be appointed by the governing body of those five jurisdictions or appointed by executive staff, depending on each agency's general practice. Well, that kind of makes sense for VTA that they would do that, I guess. Each of these five jurisdictions shall have two votes on the committee. Each jurisdiction may choose if they prefer to appoint either one member or two members to cast these two votes. We've never, since we've had these appointments, done that at all. And this has been around since 2023.
Wow.
Yeah. Now, you, they can, there's a part here where you can remove members, which I might not be able to find at this time, but I do think that we should probably bring these bylaws to the City Council for, for discussion. There is a part in here which it looked like they could, between the Chair and the Vice Chair, they could remove members from the committee. So the, the.
Wait, you are saying that the Steering Committee Chair and the Vice Chair can remove members appointed by the, the other jurisdictions?
Yeah, I want to look, look for that again, but that's, there was something odd in here about being able to remove members that we need to evaluate. So the duties, powers, and functions of this committee are to tender its advice to the Stevens Creek Corridor Working Group, which is the staff members that got assigned to this, with respect to policy matters under consideration related to the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study, and review the status of the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study deliverables. I don't quite see in that how it is that they directed staff to work on the scope. And that's where, going back to the, the meeting agenda, I don't know if our staff received a full agenda packet, but all I, all I got was this skeleton outline of the agenda. So did you receive materials that, that I did not, such as, we were supposed to approve the meeting minutes, but they didn't provide me the meeting minutes. They have an Item 5, Implementation Work Scope Number 1 Action Item, but they didn't provide me any hint of what that scope action item would be. And in the bylaws, they clearly state that they are a round act body, and that they will be following that. So did, did staff receive materials that I did not?
I don't recall, Vice Mayor, if we received all of those materials. We did review the presentations that were provided to the Steering Committee prior to the meeting.
Okay, so I was not provided those, and I was told that the bylaws, I believe, were on the website, and they didn't specify what website they were referring to. So after the meeting, I had to hunt around to locate them on the San Jose website, and I don't know if we have it on our own. I think that when we are assigned to these committees, if bylaws exist, that we should be given them. And since the council hasn't actually been following them, that's, that's an issue. As to the scope, there was some comments from the public, which I think some of the issue here is the, the language that, that people are using. So I'm hearing the word adopt, accept, and, and that if they're just looking at the scoping part of this project, that, that somehow the rest that was actually approved by the other cities isn't going to happen. So the resolution for San Jose states that they will be accepting the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study and directing staff to work through the intra-jurisdictional working group to develop, find funding, and implement the plans proposed in the vision study. Then Santa Clara, so that was, that was, that's the start of their resolution for San Jose. Then Santa Clara, almost identical language, that they would be accepting the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study and directing staff to work collaboratively, collaboratively through the intra-jurisdictional working group to study, develop, find funding, and implement the recommendations proposed by the vision study. So that isn't simply, we're going to do some bike safety plan, that you've got to go look at the vision study specifically in order to see what is planned. And they have an array of different high-capacity transit or separate bus lane projects that they, that they suggest. So they're saying to not just accept the study, but that they're going to move on, develop, find funding, and implement the recommendations. And it's unclear which ones they actually are, are planning for, but I went further because San Jose had their prior meeting minutes online and read through them, and our city representative was advocating for high-capacity, high-speed transit within the meeting minutes, and a transit station hub that would take over the parking lots at Danza College. And that was, that was news to me. Were you aware that this has been advocated for?
So when you say our city representative was advocating for those items, you are referring to city staff?
No, it was, it was former Mayor Way, and then she was still assigned to the committee as Councilmember Way.
Okay, yes, there were various items that were advocated for by the Steering Committee members at the time, so.
Okay. And then I also noticed there was a, a request from Councilmember Kamay for with regarded, with regards to the bus lines as well. And interestingly, they had a meeting September 2024, and they provided a draft resolution for the cities to adopt, which did not have this strong language that Santa Clara and San Jose ended up having in, in their adopted resolution. And that's, that's really, you know, the crux of the matter, is that theirs is saying to get funding and implementation of these various projects when that's, that's going beyond our expectations. And they're looking for, so when you're looking at SB 63 and having the taxation for transportation, their concern is that that, this is really what, what they're looking for, is some project that essentially is going to try to entice voters to agree to a sales tax. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I have plenty more to, to say on this particular item, but we're doing question time. Mayor?
Yeah. Okay. So any more question on this? So I think then we will then go to deliberations. We already had the public comment. And so do you, any recommendation on how we will move forward?
I, I, yes, I do have some thoughts about this. So it was troubling to be on the, the VTA Policy Advisory Committee and see this item go through there. I did not have direction from the council, so I abstained that item. The Vision Study went to the board, and the board accepted it back in May of 2025 without any input comments from the city of Cupertino. So I would like personally to see the, the mayor write a letter to VTA regarding the importance of collaboration and having consideration for all the cities that are involved in projects like this. Additionally.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So did the VTA Board also adopt a resolution similar to San Jose and Santa Clara have to specifically talk about they will obtain funding for implementation?
I would have to research that for you. I ran out of time. I did, yeah, I was doing a lot of research on what San Jose had posted. Also.
Does the staff have any knowledge about the VTA resolution? No, that's fine.
It should be available in the May 1st, 2025, meeting minutes for the board, so it, it won't take but 15 minutes to locate that. Also, with regards to the, the meeting on September 12th, I do think there were some brown act issues with regards to the agenda item, Implementation Work Scope Number 1. There's, I don't think that there's enough information there for a member of the public to see that the project was going to have a further scope in moving, moving forward with it. I think that our, our city attorney could weigh in on that. But clearly, when we were trying to approve the prior meeting minutes, when they didn't include the. when they didn't include them in the packet, that we ended up having to drop that item because we didn't have the materials there. I think just kind of in general, for their agendas, there needs to be a little bit more information than what they're providing. And, and as you know, looking at ours, that we provide a great deal of information. You, you know what the item is about. So, I would like also a letter to, to the Steering Committee with regards to that. When we joined the JPA for Cities Association, there were bylaws which we approved here. And so, I do want it, I would like it researched if council ever saw these bylaws for this Steering Committee.
Can we maybe get, does the staff know whether we have ever put the bylaws on the council agenda? I don't remember, but then my memory is not good.
Sorry, keep having to run up here. My understanding is no, the bylaws did not come to City Council. My understanding is the Steering Committee discussed and agreed to those bylaws at the committee meetings, my understanding.
So, do the other cities have two representatives?
We're talking about a primary and an alternate. These are the representatives that.
And they get two votes, or just one?
Just one is my understanding, is how it's been. No, is it two?
Yeah. Through, through the mayor, that was, that was that odd paragraph I was reading you. Section 103, number of members. It'll have members appointed from participating jurisdictions, cities of San Jose, Santa Clara and Cupertino, the County of Santa Clara and Valley Transportation Authority. Quick question as to why would the county have voting members on this? Do they, is there county land that Stevens Creek is going through?
Santa Moss Expressway, Lawrence Expressway. Any of the others' expressways are owned by the county.
The intersections? Okay, but they don't, they don't own the actual east-west roadway? It's, it's when they're hitting the intersections?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and, and Valley Transportation Authority? Why are they, if we're trying to, if it's supposed to be a collaborative, just kind of hypothesize what they're, what they were theorizing there? You know, why you would have VTA be voting when?
Well, they are the congestion management agency for, for Silicon Valley. And they were the ones who initially kind of launched the, the project, the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study.
Okay, so, it, through the, through mayor, it was my understanding that this was actually started more by San Jose and the District One representative, going back to when they did a RFI for transit down Stevens Creek Boulevard. And they had about 20 applicants that turned in all sorts of wild proposals, such as the Boring Company Project, Glide Ways. There was a Bombardier Plan and BYD, going back several years. So, yeah, so each of these five jurisdictions shall have two votes on the committee. Each jurisdiction may choose if they prefer to appoint either one member or two members to cast these two votes. And an issue there is that Cupertino owns a good section of it all by ourselves, and we can be outvoted by these other members, VTA.
So, so it's already 10-0-9? And that's, keep focus on the resolution that we would like to approve. I think, so I heard that we would like to have a letter to VTA indicating that they should have risk, getting, gotten input from each city before they approve their, accepted the study, and a letter to Steering Committee addressing concerns on Brown Act violation, such as the lack of agenda materials. And I, but I hope that we, today, we approve the resolution. So, we, or averaging of the resolution, so we don't put this back on the council agenda again. And so, council, so Vice Mayor, do you, do you have a proposed revision of the draft resolution?
May I make a comment, a quick comment?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm probably on the other end of this issue. So, it sounds like we have a flawed process where we agreed to participate without approval by our council at the Steering Committee and JPA level. We have a study which failed to reach out to key stakeholders in the auto dealerships and drivers. The times of these meetings do not enable the average citizen to provide input. We talk about the inclusiveness that we need, but we also exclude the average Santa Clara County resident majority who needs to get from A to B safely and quickly. We have a scenario which will enable all housing bills to worsen the quality of life in Cupertino. This continued burden on circulation of a majority mode of transportation is my big concern. I'm worried this will be used as another way to add to our sales tax, which is 7.25 at the county level. And the cities have tacked on 2% to 2.5% more, pushing for a measure A, and then some more. That will take us to almost 11% in sales tax. We have an agency that has not lowered the over-cost per mile and cost per trip. They focused on light rails, bus lanes, and bike lanes. Our pavements have gone unmaintained. When autonomous vehicles come into play, they'll deliver at a lower cost and a higher level service. We need to stop approving projects without doing our due diligence, as Vice Mayor Moore has. I'm still for rejecting the study and its recommendations. I would like us also to reduce our service levels to less than three trips an hour. This is an example of public policy gone amok. So, I am against this, and I would vote against it, but I will support any motions that has conditions.
Through the mayor, it's, it's, it's quite difficult to, to condition this in, probably the cleanest way is, is what Councilmember Wong is suggesting. Yeah, and I did locate this section. With the exception of the Chair and Vice Chair, a member may be removed from the Stevens Creek Corridor Steering Committee by a majority vote of the Stevens Creek Corridor Steering, Steering Committee at any time and for any reason. Interesting.
So, if we continue to join this Steering Committee, we would get outvoted almost on every motion, and then our objection would be completely ignored. But then, since the motion is approved, then it will be assumed Cupertino somehow have to go along with any funding or implementation. And then also that somehow this Steering Committee has the authority to remove a Cupertino member from the committee. It's a very odd bylaw, but theoretically, that could be true. I, at this point, I don't see any value to stay in the Steering Committee. But I think, I don't want to outright, I know some people are saying, all right, reject the study. I don't want to reject the study because it is something we have signed up with, back in 2019, with the good intention of that work with San Jose and Santa Clara. However, the outcome of that seems to be, they totally ignored in the study, like Vice Mayor said, our, the improvement we've made in our part in Cupertino, and how we have made Cupertino safer with no parking on Stevens Creek, separated bike paths along Stevens Creek, which none of the other cities have. So, it seems before they come up to the Cupertino standard, working with them might only serve their purpose, not Cupertino's priorities. So, but, so I would propose that we use this draft resolution. Staff has created based on the council comment, but add a statement that Cupertino will not invest any more city funding resource or staff time on the Steering Committee until the conditions stated in the resolution is met.
I can support that, Mayor.
I can support that. And then, and I, then that would be, I, we can make that part of a motion. And the motion would also include authorizing the mayor to send a letter to VTA to stress, to raise a copy of the approved resolution and stating that we think VTA should not have approved, accepted the study without getting any input from the city or our residents. And that we, this, this letter would restate the conditions under which we would consider any future study along the corridor. And then authorizing the mayor to write a letter to the Steering Committee on the concerns that the bylaws were not approved by individual jurisdiction and, or were not even followed by the Steering Committee, such as two voting members from each jurisdiction, and the concerns of Brown Act violations, such as agenda packets not prepared. Any other concern we should state?
Well, I think, I think.
And then also, of course, the letter will include a copy of our resolution, and then stress the conditions under, that we would like to be met before we rejoin the Steering Committee. Okay, so, city clerk, did you get all that? Yeah?
Yes, Mayor.
So, that's my motion, and.
More second.
So, any friendly amendments?
I just have a question for staff. This is a lot of new conditions, so I'll reiterate my prior question about how our inter-agency partners are going to view this, because quite frankly, I think this is all getting a little silly.
And first, let me clarify. The only change I am making to the draft resolution, which is on the agenda, is to make it clear Cupertino will not join Steering Committee or spend, expense any more funding or staffing resource until the condition stated in the draft resolution is met. I'm not adding any condition. I'm just saying, here is a condition that this is, we will not join to spend more time until the condition we have spent, expressed is met.
That's extraordinary considering the conditions, so.
The conditions are on the agenda?
Yes, I know.
Yeah?
I know, and those are extraordinary conditions.
Okay.
I have a different take through the mayor. I, I hope our inter-agency partners will take the time to do their due diligence. And their residents demand a higher standard of their electives to do that diligence. Because I don't think they're all in agreement with this.
So, are you, so I am happy to include that statement in the letter to VTA and Steering Committee that we encourage them to do their due diligence.
They blindly passed it.
As we have done in our resolution.
And we're happy to share our findings with them.
And we are happy to share our findings with them. Yeah, that's true. We are, they can invite Vice Mayor to give a presentation to them. So, so city clerk, have you, could you share the motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'm just cleaning it up. Okay, let me share my screen. So, okay. Authorize the mayor to send a letter to VTA with a copy of the resolution and stating that VTA should not have accepted the study without getting input from the city or residents? The letter would restate the conditions under which the council would consider any future study along the corridor? And also authorize the mayor.
So, the letter would restate the conditions that's in the draft resolution? So, just to be clear, I'm not adding any new ones.
And then, would you be sending an additional letter to the Steering Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and then send a letter to the Steering Committee on the concerns that the bylaws were not approved by individual jurisdictions and were not followed by the Steering Committee, such as two voting members from each jurisdiction, and regarding concerns of Brown Act violations, like agenda packets not being prepared properly? And.
Also, and the letter to the Steering Committee would also include the conditions under, mentioned in the draft resolution? And.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, can you speak into your microphone, please?
So, and the letter to the Steering Committee will also include what we have written to VTA, which is that conditions of the draft resolution under which we would consider any future study along the corridor?
I'm sorry, I.
And conditions under which we would rejoin the Steering Committee? That's okay. Maybe I.
Under the conditions of what was written to the Steering Committee?
No, I strike that, sorry. Strike that sentence, just. The letter would also include the conditions under which, would also state that Cupertino will not invest any more city funding, just the, the, the bottom one. Will not include any, will not invest any more city funding resources or staff time in the Steering Committee until the conditions stated in the resolution are met. So, I think the letter will just repeat that, to be clear. Okay, so, including the working group? Oh. So, do.
Sorry, Mayor, were you, I was waiting for you.
So, Vice Mayor would like to add, will not invest any more city funding resources or staff time in the Steering Committee and the working group. And I think here, at the end, you can say, the letter to the Steering Committee would include this, this statement also. Then that should be sufficient.
The letter to the Steering Committee would include the, oh, the statement?
Yeah, the statement above.
Oh, the statement above? Okay.
I guess we shouldn't say using the draft resolution. This is a motion to approve the draft resolution on the agenda. So, the third paragraph, the third paragraph. So, approve.
Question for the Vice Mayor.
The motion is approve the draft resolution on the agenda. With a statement that, adding a statement that, I guess, adding a statement that.
Mayor, quick question?
Yeah?
On the working group, I just wanted to confirm with staff that it won't affect any other work, including going after grants. Or I just wanted to confirm that, because I understand the Advisory Committee may be slightly different than working groups. So, I just want some clarification.
Any, I think for any grants that would be associated with this project, maybe I'm not stating this quite right, but, you know, any grants associated with this project that would affect Cupertino, I'm not sure that we'd be qualified for those. And maybe I don't understand the question.
Maybe I don't understand the question very well, but-
So, besides the steering committee, what other working groups are there?
So, maybe I'll let you, actually, you know that better.
Besides the steering committee, there's the community advisory group that had met, and then there's the working group that consists of staff from the various jurisdictions that are part of the, the study.
Okay. So, the Cupertino can still apply for bike ped grants through, with VTA, independent of the, like, we continue can apply for funding for Stevens Creek?
Yes.
Right? Regardless whether we are part of the study or not.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Thank you for confirming that.
Good question.
Yeah.
So, may I ask, we did get, receive some grant funding for the protected bike lanes for Stevens Creek Boulevard, and the construction is imminent, when is that? I, I thought it possibly was this week.
Yes, we did get some grant funds, and work basically started yesterday, so, yeah.
Okay. And, and we should probably, you know, applaud ourselves for that, because in the amount of time that they started the Stevens Creek corridor visioning study, we have approved, and we have construction starting for protected bike lanes, and I know that there have been multiple improvements on the, in the median and trees planted throughout this time, and if we look across the border to San Jose and Santa Clara, I don't know if anyone can tell me what improvements they've seen.
That's true, Stevens Creek, I think phase one are complete, which is from Main Street to, to D'Anza, right? So, we, thanks to staff, that we have improved a lot in Cupertino. So, could you project the motion again? It's almost 10:30, so let's quickly wrap this up. So, the third bullet, approve the draft resolution on the agenda based on council direction from September 3rd, and adding a statement that Cupertino will not invest, yeah.
I'll reiterate my second of that motion.
Call a question.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
So, for staff, if I'm understanding the motion correctly, it would prohibit us from any, investing any further money in the effort, and essentially participating in the steering committee, so, can the committee continue to meet without Cupertino in the interim? Because that's what it looks like.
I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that. I imagine they can continue to meet without having Cupertino there.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know why, why we want to effectively give up our seat at the table, this just kind of seems like self-sabotage. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. I think our seat at the table is meaningless when we would always be outvoted, and it's a public meeting, so if Cupertino ever wants to make a statement to the steering committee in case anything negatively affect Cupertino still, we can still write a letter to them from the council, I think. So, we are not voiceless. So, let's vote then.
The motion carries with Mohan and Frubin voting no.
It's 10:30, so, again, we need to make a motion to extend the meeting for item number-
Can we push for 11:30? There's that item that we've been waiting five years for. People say I leave early, so I'm really trying to extend the meeting.
I don't think we would even get through the transportation matter, so, let's extend the meeting to 11:30 to consider item 22, potentially item 20, if we have time.
No problem, I understand. Some people say I leave early and we can't finish, some people say we go too long, and they complain about that, too, so, we can't win.
Do hope that we consider 22, so people don't have to wait again. Okay.
Mayor, is there anything we can put off? 11:30 seems really late.
I mean, so, the motion is, we extend the meeting to 11:30 to consider number 22, the transportation matter?
That's item 20, Mayor.
Oh, mm, and item 20, the wireless facilities, that's all.
22 and 20?
Yeah. And likely, I'm guessing we might not even get to 20, but putting it in the motion just in case.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it is 22, I misspoke.
Yeah. So, we are putting off 21.
Putting off 21.
Yeah, and 22, 20, item 20, the wireless facility, we may not get to it, but council member Wong says he has been waiting for that, so-
Can we see how many members of the public are for the different items, so we can at least let them go home? Maybe, maybe number 22?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's some people here for 22?
I think we are considering 22 first anyway.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay, the motion is to extend the meeting to 11:30 and to consider item 22 and item 20.
Through the mayor, second.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now, item 22. So, we have had the staff presentation last time, does the staff any, have anything to add?
No, at this point in time, we presented last time, and I think you had opened it up to public comment. My understanding is you wanted to open it for public comment again today, and-
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is there, we did issue a supplemental yesterday and a desk item, which was a little bit later, but we do have some other documents.
Yeah, that's true. I think the supplemental from Monday were really helpful, and, so, then we will go to public comment. How many public comments do we have?
Mayor, I have 13 requests from in community hall. I see six requests virtually, so that would take us to 57 minutes.
57 minutes, that means we will again have no time to discuss and then have to close the public comment.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah?
Are you allowing individuals, and I can't recall how long they were allowed to speak, have we, have we gotten to this item at all before?
Last time we did allow, we had people to speak, and then they were allowed one minute, actually, at the suggestion of council member Mohan, who was late, and then the public member said that it was very late, and they hoped they could speak again, so, I didn't mention, initially, when we agendized it, I thought, well, we open the public comment for those who haven't spoken before, and, but then, so, maybe I will make this, open this to the council, since we are short on time, should we consider continuing the public hearing, public comment period only for those who have not spoken, and allow one minute to be consistent with the previous meeting?
Mayor, I'm wondering if this is an illegal question, where someone can claim some kind of a Brown Act violation if, if they were either, were allowed to speak two times, or if, if, some, some issue like that, where there might be an unevenness for, for how much time they're given?
I, I don't think there would be. I do think it's the mayor's prerogative to reduce the time to accommodate the individuals that want to speak, and I don't think there'd be a violation if somebody speaks twice or longer, as long as, at this time, the mayor is setting the rules, and those rules apply to the speakers in the order that they've-
Okay.
May I make a suggestion to the, to the mayor? I, I believe there are a lot of prepared comments that were set up. I, I asked the folks that put the prepared comments together to just stick to their points, and everyone stick to, if you had point A, point B, point C, point D, just go to those directly and make your points, and try to save time for everybody else who might want to comment for, for-
So, are you suggesting we don't limit the time to one minute?
No, but just use your-
But we encourage everyone to stay within one minute, so that everyone get to comment.
I mean, they've, they've all made their prepared points, I think both sides have spent time doing it, they've asked their supporters to do so, we've seen the organization, we've seen people allocate messages, yeah.
We allow people to comment again.
Let them make their point.
Okay. Okay, so we would allow everyone to comment, whether you have commented before or not, and we are not going to limit your time to one minute, or, but we would really encourage all of you who have spoken last time to not repeat yourself, and if you can just make a very short one state, sentence statement, say, I spoke last time, and I still would like you to vote this way, that would be really helpful, and those who haven't spoken last time, I would encourage you to stay within one minute, so that we can get through everyone, and the council can have a discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we will start with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Seema Linskog, followed by Evan Lajewski, and we have three minutes. Welcome, Jennifer.
Yeah, the MEs were putting $100,000 into a children's fund if people went over the time limit. Anyway, yes, I will speak quickly, I think one minute, you know, we're out the door here, okay, transportation. I will say again, I've been coming here, I don't know, since 2003, before time began, and the, the planning commission has always, it's, it's second behind the city council in terms of importance, below that are all the other committees, and I think that it has always had transportation come to it. Now, frankly, we have had a lot of new bills that came in, in the last couple of years, and they have muddied the waters, never seen anything like this. The last seven years, we started fighting over transportation, before that, it was just FIR. Now, it's like, what are we doing with this road? That's why there is so much discussion about it, but I want transportation situations to go to the planning commission, people do drive cars, and that is one of the things that we need to make sure that we plan for. We, we've got seven builders remedies coming in down Stevens Creek Boulevard, we're losing our retail, and we are going to be floating in traffic if we do not study this. I, I respect bike ped, but I, you know, we need to have the numbers, and I'm going to say LOS and vehicles, VMT, together, they will get us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Seema Linskog, followed by Evan Lajewski, followed by Erve Marci. Erve, Erve Marci, welcome, Seema.
Hi there. I, before I start, I just want to make a comment that I've been sitting here for hours and hours and hours and hours, and it is kind of offensive to watch you guys drone on and on and on, without any regard for how much time you spend on every topic, and somehow it becomes our problem when it comes to public comments, that you cut public comments instead of having better diligence in how much time you guys spend on discussions. Okay. I am on the planning commission, but I'm speaking today as myself. I urge you to choose option three, keep the bike ped commission's scope and authority intact, and rename the commission to the Complete Streets Commission, or the Transportation Mobility Commission, to more accurately reflect, reflect its character. Transportation Mobility Commission, focused solely on creating safe streets for all residents, is critical to the livability of Cupertino. Every single resident uses our streets, every single day. Our students, youth, and seniors walk, roll, and bike on our streets more than any other demographic. They are vulnerable minorities, because most of them don't vote, so it's critical to have a commission whose sole focus is on the safety of residents on our city streets. Choosing anything else in option three is a dramatic overreaction to the feedback of a handful of car drivers, and you've gotten a ton of emails, so you know there's a lot of residents who care about, who are drivers, who care about students and pedestrians and seniors. The commission, the bike ped commission, meets once a month in a public setting, fully transparent, fully accessible, and now it's going to hybrid format. Residents, including car drivers, can and should engage with the commission to make sure the individual needs are being listened to and considered. It is really not a reason, because they are not involved enough in the bike ped commission is not a reason to strip the bike ped commission of all of its authority. It's also fiscally irresponsible, we've covered that, it could potentially risk us losing tens of millions of dollars of potential grant money, so, in the interest of some perceived efficiencies, that are perceptions, not substantiated by, proven by any independent analysis, we would give up tens of millions of potential grant money. That seems a really bad fiscal decision, and it's a clear statement by council members that you care more about cars driving fast than about the safety of our students, youth, and seniors. In February, on February 4th, 2025, council member Ray Wong said that 15 serious injuries and deaths of pedestrians and cyclists are an acceptable number to him on Stevens Creek Boulevard. I sincerely hope the rest of you don't feel that way, and you will vote to keep the bike ped commission whole, and vote for option three. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Evan Lajewski, followed by Erve Marci, followed by Joel Wolf. Welcome, Evan.
Hello, I'm Evan Lajewski. I've spoken in the past, and earlier today, on the commission, or, sorry, on the, at the council. In the past, I've mentioned that I commute by bicycle, and one thing I don't know if I have mentioned, though, is I also drive, and so, I have a driver's license, I have taken the driver test, I've seen that there are bicycle questions on the driver's test, for instance, and I just wanted to mention that it's pretty rare, I would say, to find somebody who is only a bicyclist, and not also a pedestrian, or also driving a car. And so, I, I think that having the bike ped commission as it is, or renamed with option three, is a very good way to make sure that we include the bicycles and the pedestrians, and you still have the voice of car drivers there. It's not purely bicycle and purely pedestrians on there. My guess would be most members there also drive, and so I just hope that you consider that, and try to keep a focus on safety, but also realize that there are drivers there that still have a voice in that commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we have Erve Marci, followed by Joel Wolf, followed by Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Erve.
Thank you. We wanted also to point out that I'm very disappointed, again, at the time management of the meeting tonight. I think, I mentioned during the public comments that I was disappointed, because we didn't even, didn't have enough time, and here we go again. I think we can, we can do much better as a city, you can do, as a city council, much better. So, I'm part of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission of the City of Cupertino, but I speak in my name only, I'm a cyclist, a pedestrian, and a car driver, and I think that we can all really get along safely to go from A to B, and that's the whole point of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. The proposed changes strip the commission of its ability to make a positive change in the lives of pedestrians and cyclists. Only one body was not consulted, so we see the planning commission was consulted, the city council is consulted, it's a little bit like the internet meme, I consent, I consent, did you for, haven't you forgotten to ask someone? Well, that would be the Bike Ped Commission, and as a matter of fact, it was not asked, it didn't, it did not give any input about any of this, and as a matter of fact, the vice chair of the commission, Escher Beck, mentioned, was nominated by this council, mentioned today in the press that he would like to have the commission maintained as is, and that he would even like to see his powers being extended. So, I agree that the commission oversees- So I agree that the commission oversees transportation matters, and renaming would make sense, also given the fact that there are many more ways of moving today, such as e-bikes and scooters, that do not fall in the traditional buckets of bikes, cars, or pedestrians. And we definitely should adapt to that. So renaming the commission into the Transportation and Mobility Commission would actually make sense. So I'm humbly asking for your vote for option three. Thank you.
Thank you, Herve. Next we have Joel Wolf, followed by Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Ava Chow. Welcome, Joel.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm currently on the Bike Ped Commission in Cupertino. This is my third year. I ask you to approve option three, and the reasons being is, one, expertise. The Bike Ped Commission focuses on the current state of art in micromobility modes of transportation, walking, biking, scooters. We monitor and follow the design guides from the local, state, and federal agencies. This requires really a significant amount of time and energy from the BPC. We put a lot of time into Vision Zero. We put a lot of time into the Active Transportation Plan. The Planning Commission is not going to be able to do this. They're not going to put in and consider the needs of the community and accept public input. I note that, you know, the Bike Commission has one member on the VTA B-PAC. Are they going to be able to do that? Today, I met for several hours with officials from Lincoln and Montevista schools about the traffic and the congestion in the area. Will they be able to do that? I don't think so. Outside funding? I think, the way I read the staff report, I think you may lose that outside funding. So we won't have future projects. The one thing I'd like to note is that the Bike Ped Commission, we're an advisory commission. And I have to ask the council, why do you want to change? What are you afraid of? Because we're just coming up with the best recommendations for walking and biking, scootering around Cupertino. And we want to do it in a safe fashion. We want to serve the community in that way. So I'm not sure why we're an advisory commission. For example, Boeinger Road. We approved that, but that was rejected by the council. Ultimately, you can reject anything we put out there. So again, my question is, what is the council afraid of? Climate change? I don't know if you know this, but the 2022 Cupertino Climate Action Plan recommends a 15% and 23% share for active transportation modes by 2030 and 2040, respectively. So I don't know how you're going to get to that. Maybe you're going to ignore the entire plan. Traffic reduction? We're going to have a bunch of housing in Cupertino if we, if Valco gets developed. I, you want to have everybody in a car? I don't. I live near the corner of Stevens Creek and Deans. I think the only way to get there is to have a strong Bike Ped Commission that really works on these issues and tries to find alternatives to driving. And then public confusion. I think, I don't think the public's going to understand what's going on. I mean, it's very rare to see a, the micromobility issues being handled by the Planning Commission. So I strongly urge the council to adopt option three. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. I previously listed Jennifer Sheeran as a speaker, but Jennifer has since moved to those requesting to speak remotely, so I will call on you when we move to that group. And next we have Ava Chow, followed by Neil Park McLintock, followed by, I believe, Jean, it's your handwriting? Did you request to speak? Jean Bedord? Yes, okay. So Ava, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members of Cupertino City. My name is Ava Chow, Cupertino Union School District trustee. However, tonight, I am speaking in my own capacity as a Cupertino resident. I see it took a while for Mayor Chow to keep her word, as stated earlier in the beginning of tonight's meeting, by not discriminating against the people who are speaking on this issue, allowing the same number of minutes as everyone else. Please continue to do the honorable thing. I would like the council members to support our Bike Pedestrian Commission for the safety of our residents, especially to our students and the children who attend our schools. Again, I remind you, I am a teacher during the day. Why safety? Walkers and bikers do need protection from a two-ton or more vehicles on the road. There are no comparison of safety. Would you put your own children and families at risk? We are privileged to live in a community where families feel safe walking, biking to schools. I was talking to a parent yesterday who brought up how wonderful it was to grow up and bring her children up in Cupertino, where she walked all over to the city hall, to shopping, and taking her kids to school. People go walking often after dinner, as I see them pass my house, and they often ride bikes for fun, not only that, also commuting to work. We want to maintain that. And for those who may not feel safe, we want to keep the Bike Ped Commission to advocate for areas in our city that may need safer streets and pathways to school. Cupertino Bike Ped Commission staff members support our safe routes to school at each of our Cupertino Union School District schools in Cupertino. They organize meetings for the parents, teachers, and administrators to ensure pathways to schools is safe. Each school has unique safe routes to school to increase safety for our students. Yesterday and today, from community meetings with city and educational leaders of Los Altos and Sunnyvale that I participate in, has praised our Safe Routes to School program. Do you know all of Cupertino's Safe Routes to School is an exemplary program? Many people from other cities want to duplicate our program because of its effectiveness. We have many students who walk to school and back to school. The Bike Ped Commission is the voice of our students. I hope our entire council will be supportive of a standalone Bike Ped Commission, especially Mayor Liang Chow, since she was a former school board member. I hope that Mayor Chow lives up to the word honorable. There is not a day which I remember our honorable former mayor, Hung Wei. She has said many times publicly, honorable is not what the title you are called, but how you act honorably. I hope our Mayor Chow will be honorable to make the effort to keep our pathways safe. Thank you.
Next we have Neil Park McLintock, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Connie Cunningham.
I'll make my comments very brief. My name is Neil, and I would like to point out that in the staff report for option three, I'm speaking in support of option three, to have a separate transportation commission. In the staff report, it says that the only drawback to this option is that it's not what council wants. Like, just want that to set in for a second. It's just like, council wants, it's, there's no actual need to do this, and maybe like a handful of residents who are providing that direction. But this doesn't represent what people in Cupertino want. We've made really great strides in terms of transportation and making our streets much safer. If you go to other cities in the Bay Area, they're much more dangerous to ride a bike. They're much less efficient to take the bus. And we should really be proud of that and continue to make progress in that way. For the next several years, the Planning Commission's going to be really focused on a number of different housing projects in particular. And we have a huge regional needs, our regional housing needs assessment. And, I mean, that's going to be their focus. So it makes sense to have a separate commission that's focusing on transportation. And also wanted to say, as someone who can drive but presently does not have a car and walks and takes transportation, public transportation everywhere, when cyclists are safer and pedestrians are safer, then drivers are also safer, too. I mean, frequently, when you're driving, you know, you sometimes get frustrated because, you know, it's not super clear, like, where a cyclist should be, where a pedestrian should be at all times. So having a commission that makes the experience better for everybody regardless of their mode of transportation is beneficial to everybody, including drivers, too. I said it would be brief, but I kind of went on longer, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next we have Jean Bedord, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. It has been a long night. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. And you'll notice that I'm not one of the kids around here. I am speaking as a senior. Now, all of us would like to be able to drive as long as we possibly could. But what happens if that's no longer an option? I have a friend who has a perfectly good Lexus in her driveway, but she can't drive it because she has had an epileptic seizure, and you automatically lose your license when that happens. So what are her options? We're suburbia. So it's walk. Now, she's certainly not going to ride a bicycle. Now, she might consider a three-wheeled bicycle, but not a two-wheeled one. So you need, the bike, I urge you to consider the needs of seniors. And there will be additional transportation modes coming down the pike. Electric scooters are very popular. You know, are our sidewalks designed, are our trafficways designed to be able to accommodate all, you know, this new generation? So be thinking, the city needs to be thinking in terms of alternatives that are safe for seniors as well as our students. So I urge you to keep the focus with the Bike Ped Commission and broaden its scope to transportation. That, to me, makes the only, this is the only sensible way to go. The Planning Commission does not care about this type of detail, whereas a commission that is dedicated to safety will make that distinction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Stephen Scharf, followed by Jennifer Kui. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm Connie Cunningham, 38-year resident and Chair Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I urge the council to choose option three. Option three continues the expertise on BPC for people who walk and ride bicycles. These are often for youth, students, seniors, and others that have mobility issues, as you have already heard. Any other option will kill the purpose of the BPC, which is to provide data and recommendations about traffic projects to council. Seniors and students are helped by having a commission that understands their needs. Cupertino's overarching goal for residents is safety. Traffic safety is a big need for our suburban city. I am a senior. I am a pedestrian. I am a driver. Drivers are not always happy with changes. I am a driver, and I am happy with the changes. I do not want to hit a pedestrian or a bicyclist. I know that it would be much worse collision for either of them than it would be for my car. Comments provided by the staff report bring up issues for options one, two, and four that will complicate and/or slow and increase the cost and reduce the revenue to the city. A, B, and C, I mean, option one, option two, and option four. So there doesn't seem to be much choice, except option three. I wanted to make a comment about Mayor Chow's comments about her September 8 mayor's meeting and her letter, and say, they were very helpful. Thank you. I have attended other mayor's meetings. They also were well-attended and included many residents with issues that they cared about deeply. Mayor Chow listened, and people were respectful of her leadership. The September 8 meeting she described in her notes sounds the same. I am deeply concerned because Chair Rao of the Planning Commission is making unfounded statements about the September 8 mayor meeting and also about a fellow planning commissioner. His unfounded accusations decrease the ability to work together and cause loss of respect for the commission by the public. Commissioner's handbook clearly states how commissioners are supposed to conduct themselves and their meetings. Good behavior is expected at other meetings.
Connie, Connie, this is not germane to the agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't, I was so busy talking. Yeah, please. Make comment on the agenda item. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Connie. Next we have Stephen Scharf, followed by Jennifer Kui, followed by Beck Poltrunetti. Welcome, Stephen.
Hi, I'm on the Planning Commission, speaking for myself. As a senior, a cyclist, I think one of two people that actually did cycle to the meeting tonight, a pedestrian and a driver, I think we should create a Transportation and Mobility Commission that encompasses bicycles, pedestrians, personal mobility, on-demand transportation services, privately-owned vehicles, school transportation, corporate buses, and public transit. We really need to take a systems approach to transportation and not focus only on bicycles and pedestrians. I think this should be a new commission, and once the Transportation and Mobility Commission is established, then the current Bicycle Pedestrian Commission can be disbanded. This will signify a fresh start on addressing the transportation issues in our city. I would not favor transitioning all the transportation matters to the Planning Commission. There's enough work for us to do, to have two separate commissions and enough citizens willing to serve. But I would include the Planning Commission for major infrastructure changes and for the Active Transportation Plan and the Stevens Creek Corridor vision if we continue to participate. There is a relationship of housing, which Planning Commission approves and looks at, and transportation. I'm going to share a little story. My niece's son in college just won a wonderful battery-powered scooter in some scavenger hunt contest at his apartment complex. Except, three days earlier, the apartment complex sent out a letter saying, "You cannot have any battery-powered mobility devices on the premises." And this is going to be an issue moving forward if we're really trying to encourage personal mobility, because it's very dangerous to charge and store these in high-density housing. There's already been deaths and fires in other cities when these devices catch fire, and electric cars, too. So there is a role for Planning Commission, but I think it really should be a Transportation and Mobility Commission. I would point out Palo Alto, actually, it is Planning and Transportation Commission. But I don't think we should go in that same direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next we have Jennifer Kui, followed by Beck Poltrunetti, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, everyone. It's my first time here, and today is my birthday, so I thought I'd be spending it with my family instead of here. Thank you. So, one, I don't ride a bicycle, terrible at it, but I do send my kids to school every day. They either walk to school, and I have actually walked with them to school every day for the last, I don't know, like, five years. My middle school son, he rides his bike to school. I, myself, I drive everywhere, get very annoyed when I'm stuck in traffic. Anything that reduces the lanes really pisses me off. However, this is a big, complex problem, and everyone has to be able to come in and out of every street in a safe and sort of predictable way. So I am in favor of an independent commission, more from the standpoint of very difficult problems need, a lot of different opinions and input. And the best way to do that is actually to have sort of independent charters and slightly different goals, because I think that's the way the best conversations happen, and you actually come to a solution where things end up being better. I, myself, am a city person. I grew up with buses and sidewalks everywhere. Like, when I walk to school right now, there's a sidewalk every few houses and then nothing. So I am used to basically having optionality. And I think in order for Cupertino to grow, not necessarily in huge size, but just in the way the population is changing and what the needs of the city are going to be as vehicles start changing and the way people get around starts changing, is you really need just different opinions coming together and working together. And I think it's really hard to do that when decision-makers are in charge of everything, because it's very easy to sort of squash differences of opinion, or those opinions don't always make their way to the light of day. So I'm in favor of, I guess it's option three, but just basically maintaining some better independence, and then hopefully working well together with the Planning Commission. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Beck Poltrunetti, followed by Luis Sedadi, followed by Emily Poon. Welcome, Beck.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, everyone, again. My name is Beck Poltrunetti, Cupertino resident and member of Walkback Roll California, speaking for myself today. Ever since Ethan Wong got killed by a gravel truck in 2015, riding home from the same high school I ride home from, there have been some pedestrian safety improvements in Cupertino. The Bike-Ped Commission has done things like the Protected Bike Lane McClellan at Stevens Creek Trail past Blackberry Farm, and I would like to thank the city for these improvements. Problem is, that progress is being threatened. This item that I'm speaking on is an attempt to kill the Bike-Ped Commission. While in the 7th grade, I called the cops myself, because I witnessed two cars smash into each other next to Kennedy Middle School, one spinning into the sidewalk during school pickup. You know, when the kids are walking on set sidewalk. There was no barrier or even the little concrete strip you get for Protected Bike Lane to keep the car on the road and not on the sidewalk where the children are. The kind of things that a bicycle and pedestrian commission implements. If you care at all about the health and safety of the kids in your town just trying to get to school, don't kill the group trying to keep them alive. Because if you merge the Bike-Ped Commission into the Planning Commission, there will be no more bicycle and pedestrian safety in this town. There will be no barrier to keep the cars on the sidewalk, as they would be too busy debating over local zoning ordinances, construction permit approvals, and parking spaces to ever even address bicycle and pedestrian safety. And the next time cars collide in front of the school, we get Ethan Wong all over again. Who knows? I might even be the one that gets killed next time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beck. Next, we have Luis Sedadi, followed by Emily Poon. Welcome, Luis.
So here we are again, after 11:00, talking about transportation. And if the pressure is being put on the speakers for Bike-Ped Commission to speak quickly and limit their time, the council needs to be careful in managing their time. Like, one of the council members went way more than five minutes on minutia, and another council member went dictating a letter that she could have easily did a draft before the meeting instead of dictating it on the dais for more than five minutes. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I want to say thank you to Councilman Ray Wong for advocating for all the speakers to have their full three minutes, as all the other speakers on all the other subjects have. Keep the Bike-Ped Commission as a separate entity from the Planning Commission, and keep all transportation topics with Bike-Ped Commission. I support Option Three. There are many reasons for this. It's a requirement for grant funding and application for a city to have a separate Bike-Ped Commission. Essentially, all the surrounding cities have a separate Bike-Ped Commission. Since 2018, more than 87% of Cupertino Bike-Ped infrastructure has been from grants. Why jeopardize our ability to receive grants for Bike-Ped projects? The City Council needs to be fiscally responsible. The Planning Commission's mission is land planning. The Bike-Ped Commission is safety for bikes, pedestrians, and vehicle safety. Safety should be a core issue with the city. Please allow for the most vulnerable walkers and bikers, which include children and seniors, to have their safety closely reviewed and protected by a separate commission whose core mission is their safety. The vast majority of the surrounding cities have a separate Bike-Ped Commission. Why would Cupertino want to be the only city to rid itself of the Bike-Ped Commission? It sends a very poor signal to everyone of the lack of importance the City Council places on the safety of those who travel through our streets. As the staff report states, voting the Bike-Ped Commission into the Planning Commission will significantly increase staff time. Staff time has been decreased because of our fiscal constraints. Please do not unnecessarily burden the staff with unnecessary responsibilities. I support renaming the Bike-Ped Commission to Mobility and Transportation Commission, which more aptly reflects its important mission. Please choose yes on Option Three on Agenda 22 to show you care and have a high priority to safety for everyone who travels on our road by voting yes on Option Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Our next speaker is Emily Poon. Welcome, Emily.
Good evening. Bike safety is very much on our minds. Recently, I heard about the two-way bike lanes at Lawson Middle School and drove over there today around 3:00 PM to take a look. It was busy, and most of the bike riders I saw were boys. They made full use of the bike lane. At one time, I saw two boys riding side by side. More on this later. The sidewalk was even busier, with a lot of students leaving school on foot. The two-way bike lanes are separated from the car lane by a row of big, fat, plastic bollards, which are close together. The color is dark green and white. I think they look much better, because they're more visible than plain white bollards. I stood on the sidewalk, and I asked some girls walking past me whether they liked the bollards or the concrete curbs better. The response was that these are better. The concrete curbs give riders a restrictive feel. I only talked to one group of girls. It is not meant to be a study of any kind. My experience of driving in a car lane next to a bike lane protected by concrete barriers was along McClellan. I have heard a common complaint that these are not friendly to car tires. So the complaint can go both ways. They are not friendly to bike tires either, I think. Or is it merely a psychological fear of bumping up against the concrete? So of the two boys, I saw two boys riding not single file but side by side. So one of them was riding in the wrong bike lane, so to speak. It sounds dangerous, but in fact is not. At that time, all the bike traffic was outbound from the middle school. The chance of his hitting opposing bike traffic was zero. I have seen two-way bike lanes close up before. I saw them in Berkeley, near the university. They are on the street where the gym is. Those bike lanes are considerably wider. Bikers there must observe rules and ride in the designated direction, or else the results would be disastrous. E-bikes and scooters have become so popular in a college town that collisions would lead to serious injury. In Berkeley, a whole lane adjacent to the double bike lane have become parking spaces, so the parked cars are the buffer or the protection. I'm not advocating for any design. The whole issue of what kind of bike lanes, how wide, one way or both ways, and what kind of buffer is used deserves our attention. We all agree that safety is important, so can we start from what we agree on and work together? Can we look at any quarrels or any disagreements or any dissatisfaction of our colleagues or non-colleagues? Can we all just wipe them out and regard them as a storm in a teacup? Please work together, because the kids need that. Thank you.
Thank you. That is your time. Now, we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have San Rao, followed by Rosa Kim, followed by Helen Wyant. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission, speaking on behalf of myself only. I would like to firstly remind all of us that council never asked for an option to eliminate the Bike-Ped Commission. I appreciate the completeness and thoroughness of staff, but perhaps the review and approval of the staff report could have eliminated that option in the interest of avoiding public confusion, as we have seen. If you go back and look at the minutes when this was asked for, it was to look at Transportation Charter review. There was no mention that Bike-Ped be eliminated as an option. I hope we can do better going forward in that the staff reports are carried for options that are really not options. The entire evening, we have talked about not eliminating Bike-Ped Commission, and in fact, council never asked for that. And it is important to have the Bike-Ped Commission, because there are things that only the Bike-Ped Commission can review, which are things that are bike-specific. So nobody, nobody has asked to eliminate this thing. It has created massive confusion, because it was included in the report. So we should all be clear on that. The second thing is, we do have grants that require BPA equivalent reviews. There are TDA III grants, there are MTC grants, and so on. And so we need to preserve the BPC. We do not want to dissolve the BPC. However, what nobody has spoken about today is that a vast majority of road users are frustrated, because decisions have been made in isolation that did not factor their input. That is a glaring gap. The Deans Boulevard, lane reduction and removal is a classic example of that, and we need to address that issue. And the path to addressing that is to preserve BPC, have the BPC review Bike-Ped projects, and allow for transportation to get BPC input, bring that input under advisory recommendations to the Planning Commission, and review only transportation plans that impact our roadways in the Planning Commission. So I would be recommending Option Two with a couple of caveats. The transit also be reviewed in the Planning Commission. Transit is critical, since it impacts SB 79 and density of development. And secondly, that we be very clear that anything that has a roadway impact actually get a review and not be a discretionary decision by staff. And finally, for those that are saying the Planning Commission is too busy, let me give you some numbers. In 2022, the Planning Commission canceled 17 of its 24 meetings. In 2023, 15 of 24 meetings were canceled. In 2024, 13 of 24 meetings were canceled. In fact, the most meetings the Planning Commission has had is this year, when we have only canceled six, several of those being because of a month's recess in August. And so the Planning Commission is not too busy. We do not get these master transportation plans coming in every month, and so let's have the best of both.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Next, we have Rosa Kim, followed by Helen Wyant, followed by Bill Wilson.
Honorable Mayor Chow and City Council members, my name is Rosa Kim. I'm serving as a trustee for the Fremont Union High School District, but today, I'm speaking in a personal capacity. I want to express my strong support for Option Three, keeping the Bike-Pedestrian Commission intact. The safety of bikers and pedestrians is directly tied to the safety of our students. Every day, students in Cupertino walk or bike to school, and their families rely on the city to prioritize safe routes. The Bike-Pedestrian Commission has the specialized expertise, focus, and community voice worldwide on these critical issues. Bike and pedestrian safety requires dedicated attention as a priority in itself. Keeping this commission intact ensures we continue to center community voices, student safety, and our shared vision of a more walkable, bikeable Cupertino. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosa. Next, we have Helen Wyant, followed by Bill Wilson, followed by Betsy Magus. Welcome, Helen.
Good evening. I'm Helen Wyant, and I'm a Cupertino resident since 1979. I strongly support Option Three from the list of staff recommendations. From the sequence of events that I've observed, I see that there are a few people who don't like initiatives proposed by the Bike-Pedestrian Commission. Well, we have five council members who take input from commissions, and then they make their decisions. If you don't like the results, make your voices heard in the next election, but don't narrow the diversity and expertise in viewpoints that we have today in our city government. The Bike-Pedestrian Commission has an important responsibility and has achieved truly great benefits for Cupertino, at no expense to cars, I might add. Their focused mission to review, monitor, and make recommendations on transportation to improve the safety and quality of life for all residents is essential for a thriving, safe, and environmentally healthy Cupertino. The Planning Commission already has a huge responsibility to provide expert advice on land use matters. Given the significant challenge in housing in our state, land use needs to be focused and informed by the Planning Commission. Adding transportation to their responsibilities would necessarily dilute and deprioritize the attention that transportation urgently requires. Adding transportation to Planning Commission responsibilities would lose focus and would lose deep expertise on how to continue improving and innovating transportation in our Cupertino community. Therefore, I strongly support Option Three, presented by the city staff. Leave all transportation matters under the Bike-Pedestrian Commission purview. All the other options are regressive. They degrade the quality of our city government. They result in added staff costs, confusion and responsibilities, reduced focus on transportation, loss of specialized bicycle and pedestrian advisory, and negative impact on transportation grant eligibility. They are bad for Cupertino. Keep Cupertino moving forward, not backward. Please vote for Option Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Next, we have Bill Wilson, followed by Betsy Magus, followed by Babu Shrinivasan.
Yes, yes, thank you. Mayor Chow and Cupertino City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. As a 16-year trustee for the Fremont Union High School District, I'm especially interested in the impact of safe transportation for students. I think you've heard eloquently from our current school board member on CUSD and from Rosa Kim, my colleague on FU HSD. But one of the things I heard most frequently from residents was a very legitimate concern about traffic around our schools. The school district took some steps to try to address this, but the most effective was encouraging students to walk or bike to school. To make this succeed, it is important that cyclists can feel safe. Unfortunately, it took a tragedy with a Montevista student to jump-start the bike lanes on McClellan. But now, students can safely use those lanes and others the city has proactively created. With the trails and bike lanes now in place, more students can bike or walk to school with tremendous health benefits in terms of exercise and time outside away from their phones. Plus, residents' longer move from school days can enjoy the benefits of those lanes and trails. However, much more needs to be done. We need a commission that continues this effort to have transportation options that enhance the experience of living in Cupertino. That work needs to be done in a matter that addresses the needs of all residents, and it can only be coordinated with a commission knowledgeable and focused on this task. Cannot be done as a side hustle by a commission focused on building projects and codes. Please choose Option Three, so that we can continue to make Cupertino a livable, a livable city we can all enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Betsy Magus, followed by Babu Shrinivasan, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Betsy.
Hi, thank you, Betsy Magus. I'm a member of the Santa Clara BPA and the VTA BPA, speaking tonight for myself. I am also disappointed by the time management and the focus of this council. I've been here mainly to comment on these two items, but somehow, these topics have dragged out over multiple late-night meetings. Please listen to and read so many comments and choose Option Three. Planning commissions are about land use, which is intimately linked with transportation, but transportation really is its own issue with its own considerations. I don't know that much about architecture, permitting, or zoning, and I doubt your planning commissioners really want to know the minutiae of traffic safety and design, nor are they likely to have the dedication to handle this entire topic on top of all they already do. If the Planning Commission does want to understand transportation better, have some more joint meetings. You did one for Lawrence-Mitty Trail and Park Planning. It was terrific. We should all be doing that. If you choose to consolidate the groups, expect transportation and especially safety and active transportation to get short shrift. Bicycle and pedestrian committee members are your local citizen experts, and most of us, most of them, are also drivers. I try not to drive very much, and I still end up driving, because of the way we build our transportation systems. It heavily favors cars. Drivers naturally resist change and may require its suggestions to reduce road space dedicated to cars, but it's not only their road space, and physical devices like curbs and lane reductions are the most effective means to reduce speeding and make streets safer. By all means, make it a transportation commission that includes all of the modes, but please keep it, keep the avenues open for the funding sources that require citizen review, and please at least seriously consider their recommendations. If you've never biked for transportation and wound up on a road like Stevens Creek or El Camino, you might not understand just how vulnerable it makes you feel and be to share a road with cars with only a painted line to protect you from two-ton motor vehicles going many times your speed. I didn't set out to be a transportation advocate. I set out to get across town on a bicycle, most often my town of Santa, my city of Santa Clara, but sometimes also Cupertino. Please keep a bicycle pedestrian Please keep a bicycle pedestrian commission or a transportation commission, and please listen to their advice. Thank you.
Point of order, can we extend time so we can complete this item?
So in terms of time management, we had forty minutes of public comment on non-agenda item, another forty minutes on consent agenda item, another forty minutes on the, I think, another four on the vision study. That's two hours. And then plus one hour for this item, that's three hours of public comments. And this council really hasn't deliberated except for the vision study, which council member Mohan requested that we spend more time on. And we did because I think we have new information that the council had never heard before. And if we don't do our due diligence to listen and deliberate, we are not doing our jobs. The only item we have deliberated on is the vision study. And now it's already eleven twenty-six.
I would like to move that. We extend the time to midnight on this item, please? We have people waiting.
Right now, it's, the public has spoken. So it's really up to the council.
I want to deliver.
Mayor, where the public comment period is not completed, actually.
We still have comments. We still have comments. We're gonna have to extend.
There are five speakers left.
Oh, five more speakers?
Yes.
Okay. So we have to vote to extend time?
Yes, you have to suspend the rules and extend the time. In one motion.
Mayor? I move that we suspend the rules and extend time to complete this one item, and then we adjourn.
Do you mean without, we would include deliberation?
Yeah, we'll finish this one item and adjourn.
Like I said, I've been waiting for 5G for five years. I know I could wait longer, but oh, well.
The public were upset when we suspended rules. But if we don't suspend the rules, those five public member won't be able to speak.
I think it's important that they get to speak.
Finish this item, this one.
So you, so do we all? Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
I second.
So you did, you seconded it. So the motion is to suspend the rule, complete the item, including public comment deliberation and maybe a council direction. Okay. We, that's, vote on that. So.
Oh, thank you.
Who seconded the motion?
Councilmember Wong.
I did.
Oh, it's on the screen, yeah. How come the request to speak list doesn't work?
We lost that capability.
Last time it worked. And I didn't press any other button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council members, for your dedication to complete this. I think many of us have worked full time and have to get up early for our real job. Okay. I hope the public appreciate that. The ones who are complaining about time management, really, we deliberated only one item today. So now, finally, we will get to deliberate. Oh, five more comments. Sorry, sorry. Okay, five more comments.
So we have, the last speakers are Babu Srinivasan, Jennifer Shirin, Alvin Yang, Prabir Mahanti, and Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Babu.
Mayor Chow, thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate for the three minutes. This is the same situation what you are proposing now. The council is burning late-night oil and the public as well in debating all this issue. So this is exactly what I see in the Bike Ped Commission under a planning commission. The planning commission is underutilized as per Santosh and what we hear. So if they report to them and get it reviewed before implementing it and then working on what is reversing, it will reduce the noise. It will streamline the process. So keep the Bike Ped Commission and have the planning commission oversight it and look at the options proposed. Give the feedback, not to take the council's time. And the other thing what I would suggest is, there is not just an option just to debate here. We can write it to the council. Let us have that option and limit the number of comments in public. The first five people for one item and the next online and in person. Have that limit so that we don't run into this issue. This is very simple. If you want to do it, make your card top five. If you want to comment, raise your hand top five. We are not here for all the time, sitting twenty-four by seven debating and people complaining, no. But we want a feedback that whatever we write, you people are reviewing, and then what you people are coming out. Because we want everyone's time to be utilized in a fair and shared manner, right? It's like, we all have personal life as well. So there is nothing to complain here. We need to run the city as a efficient way. Same way, I would see Bike Ped Commission under a planning commission, getting their changes done and getting their expertise come through. And it is not like bike ride alone. It is overall picture of the city. The planning commission need to take care of. And what we see, it is a ego, or it is a hierarchy, or it is a power grab. That is what we saw in display today, which is not good for the people of Cupertino. So I would suggest, there is nothing like, officially, if you have only one, it's easy to get things done. But a planning commission supervising, getting the feedback on Bike Ped Commission, I see that is the right option. There is nothing, I made it. I want to grow like an independent commission. I think that is not the right thing. People need to work together and make better utilization of every commission's time. It's city council time. We don't want to come for each and everything. They can go propose with the planning commission approval, come back here and make use of the streamlined process. There is a hierarchy. Let us take everybody's time.
Thank you. That is your time. Next, we have Jennifer Shirin, followed by Alvin Yang, followed by Prabir Mahanti. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening again, Mary Chow and council members. My name is Jennifer Shirin, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. We're again here past eleven-thirty at night, talking about this issue after most people have gone to bed. We could have had this item first, but again, it was pushed to the back. You've read all the reasons that you shouldn't carve out all the transportation issues which are currently per municipal code under the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission and move them over to the Planning Commission in the sixty-plus letters you've received in the last day or so, and every single speaker tonight except for Planning Commissioner Santosh Rao and the, I think maybe the speaker had to be? I couldn't really tell. Those reasons include the increased unnecessary cost, the silencing of our most vulnerable residents, how it doesn't make sense that a commission devoted to land use and building consider road projects, the likely loss of significant grant money, how it will detract from our schools and its students, and how residents of all ages and abilities are not in favor of this change. Commissioner Santosh is clearly being disingenuous when he says this agenda item isn't about getting rid of the BPC. We're not fools. The many speakers know that this is a falsehood. His proposal is to gut the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission by taking every single project and issue that touches our roads and moving them over to the Planning Commission. There's really nothing left, maybe bike racks. This is clearly a way to silence advocates of biking and walking and also to consolidate more power onto the Planning Commission. These are all personal wants. You may agree that transportation needs more attention. I heard Mayor Chow say that at her coffee. I get that. However, there's many ways to increase the focus, such as expanding the Bike Ped Commission to a Transportation Commission, such as listed in option three. A personal power grab, such as moving transportation from the BPC to the Planning Commission, will not add to that goal, but instead bring to the city all the problems that you had mentioned and heard in all those many letters. It's not always easy to do the right thing for Cupertino. But sometimes it's clear when a plan is being pushed that is self-serving and not the best for the residents of Cupertino. You can see that by all the people who have talked tonight. This is just that case. Thank you for considering my input and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Alvin Yang, followed by Prabir Mahanti, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Alvin.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I urge you to choose option three and rename the Bike Ped Commission to the Transportation and Mobility Commission. I believe transportation is too much for the Planning Commission to handle at the same capacity that the Bike Ped Commission currently handles it at. And it's important to have a separate Transportation Commission, much like how the other cities in the Bay Area do. I also believe that if we rename the Bike Ped Commission to a Transportation Commission, it'll be much more clear to a lot of these citizens who feel like the cars aren't included in transportation when they definitely are, to show up to these meetings and voice their opinions. I believe this will help clarify where you should go to voice your opinions on transportation. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alvin. Next, we have Prabir Mahanti, followed by Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Prabir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Mayor Chow, Mayor Kitty Moore, Vice Mayor Kitty Moore, and the whole commission, honorable commission. I'm the chair of the commission, but I'm here to speak for myself. Somebody who has been living in Cupertino for past twenty-eight years and who uses De Anza Boulevard every day. I see that a lot of these major thoroughfares have maybe one or two bikes in the day, but mostly cars. And given that, you know, the population of Cupertino is rising, there is more people, more traffic, more of everything, it's best to keep the Bike and Ped Commission as it is. But to bring a holistic, you know, integrated approach, as a lot of these recommendations involve major infrastructure changes, major changes to transportation, the Planning Commission have an oversight on them and ultimately make a decision. So I vote for that, and that's my recommendation. In the interest of time, I'll keep my comments short, and that is what I recommend to the honorable commission, honorable council members and mayor and vice. Thank you.
Thank you, Prabir. And our final speaker is Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Venkatesh.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, the mayor and council members. Venkatesh Ranganathan. The staff report lists out four options for respecting commission review of transportation projects. Of these, I believe option two provides the best balance. This approach would place review of major projects with citywide impact, such as lane removal and intersection reconfigurations under the Planning Commission. While the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, BPC, would continue to review multimodal projects that have no impact on vehicle or travel, this model respects the expertise of the BPC while ensuring that decisions with broader implications are reviewed through a wider planning lens. Other cities, such as San Carlos, have similar structure, where adversary input of bicycles and pedestrians is preserved by the final oversight with a broader planning body. Retaining the BPC in an adversary capacity also ensures Cupertino meets MTC's requirement for a BPAC equivalent body, keeping the city eligible for active transportation grants. I ask the council to adopt option two, strengthening oversight, balancing input from all road users, and ensuring fair community-wide transportation plan. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Venkatesh. Mayor, that was the final speaker for this item.
Okay. So... Maybe... Yeah, so anyone? I have several slides that I'd like to share. Maybe let's hear. Yeah?
May we have some questions?
Yeah, I don't have questions.
We have more questions? Okay.
Couple. So I'm gonna try to share, share screen real quick. Is that sharing? Says I am.
Sure, we have never had time to ask questions yet.
Says I'm sharing screen. Am I sharing the screen? Yeah, okay. So a quick question here. I was looking at the Silicon Valley Hopper revenue and expenses. Which between the two commissions, would this kind of information like go to? If we want to have some, just some evaluation for the cost, potential funding in the future? So we want this project to continue. Which would that go to? Because I actually don't know.
This would probably go to the Bike Ped Commission or directly to council. Depends on what the question is or kind of where we go with that.
Sort of a status, where the rider's going? How much is it costing us each year? That kind of thing.
I mean, we bring kind of information of that to council already through various budget requests. But we have updated the Bike Ped Commission on the Hopper as well.
Okay, so both, really. So Bike Ped, okay. I've got another one. So I was looking at the Safe Routes to School program. So that one's kind of interesting. So the Planning Commission general fund cost is budgeted at one hundred and twenty-four thousand. The Bike Ped Commission budgeted at sixteen thousand eight hundred. Safe Routes to School, which has a different set of projects that they work on, it's budgeted at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars out of the general fund with one full-time employee. And I was, so I was looking at the budget there. It's really grown, and we have a Safe Routes to School, like working group. And then you've got Bike Ped. Is there, and it might be that we don't actually arrive at a solution change here tonight. But is there any kind of suggestion or appetite towards combining Safe Routes to School into the Bike Ped Commission in any way in order to, would that reduce cost? Is there any benefit that would come out of that?
I mean, currently, the Safe Routes to School program, and keep in mind, it's a program in and of itself. It's not just a Safe Routes to School committee. It is the entire program, and they do have other items in that million dollars. But aside from that, we currently do take Safe Routes to School updates and items to the Bike Ped Commission for an update as well as input on that.
Okay, is there any potential that there's duplication of effort because you're running, you know, kind of two meetings around sort of the same topic?
There are two, and maybe David could talk to this. They're really kind of two separate tracks. But because, you know, the Safe Routes to School is about getting kids to school, we provide updates to the Bike Ped Commission. So by providing updates, So by providing updates, of course, there is a little bit of double work, but we think the update's important for them to understand what's going on there, especially sometimes those projects enhance other facilities.
Okay. And I did see that we have about $400,000 spent each year for the crossing... No, it's about $140,000 for the crossing guard, and then... No, I've got it backwards. $400,000 for the crossing guard and around $140,000 for the bicycle pedestrian education at the school districts. And is there any way that you could move these expenses to the schools? Because it seems like the bicycle pedestrian education really belongs to the schools for that could be under their jurisdiction.
The city staff would likely still need to manage the bike and ped education. The schools don't generally have the resources or the time to manage that type of program. It often takes a lot of encouragement on city staff's part to get the schools involved in a lot of the pedestrian and bike education. The money that you referred to, it's $150,000 to $175,000. It's gone up a little bit, but that's 100% grant reimbursable money, so none of that is coming out of our general fund.
Okay. So there's something that's not looking right in Open Gov on that, so I'm only showing... And even in the budget, it's showing $90,000 for revenue. And I've heard what you're saying, that this is getting reimbursed, but it's not showing up in Open Gov, so we've got to fix that. And I'm almost done this for the questions part. Under the powers and functions for the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, that they have item two, to suggest recommendations, review, and monitor the city's general plan, they say transportation element, but they mean the mobility element. And if you look at the mobility element, it covers everything for, you know, with regards to transportation. Has the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission ever gone over the full general plan, I'm gonna say, mobility element, and provide any of these recommendations or review?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So that's what I was kind of wondering, is that, like, we have these duties, powers, and functions right now, are they actually doing what they're fully charged to do? So that... I noticed there wasn't a do-nothing option out of the groups of that you could... The options that you could select. Was there a reason why do-nothing was not put in there? Because I'm wondering, like, is it really broken? What we... And I think what was at issue was that we designated... We had to go to council and have the protected bike lanes, I believe it was, directed to the Planning Commission to look at. And we had the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission look at it, and we had the Planning Commission look at it. So what's wrong with doing that?
With having both commissions look at something? I think one of this is staff time, staff resources. We have limited staffing, and to be adding a lot of additional meetings takes time. For every council meeting, or just maybe every Planning Commission meeting, we probably spend 60 hours, 70 hours, creating, reviewing. There's a ton of people that look at these items. So we're trying to keep staffing resources down, so adding a bunch of additional meetings increases staff's resources to the point where we need to ask for more people.
Thank you. So, but alternatively, and we've had these few and far between, you can do a combined meeting where you have both the Bicycle Pedestrian Commissioners and the Planning Commissioners together. And I kind of wish we would do that a little more often, especially if there... If it's like that, where it's an overlapping topic. And it shouldn't be that if you're providing a staff report to the Bike Ped Commission about the protected bike lanes, for instance, on Stevens Creek Boulevard, it should be the same report that would go to each one. So with regards to the do-nothing option and, you know, see what other kinds of modifications that we can do, is that something that could be considered? Or why wasn't it?
We were tasked with coming in with options to kind of transfer stuff to the Planning Commission. Do-nothing options, always an option. And there are other options in between the gamut, right? And that's what... We're looking for input from you. What do you want us to do? And then we'll go in and dig in deeper and come in with probably ordinance modifications, stuff that kind of lays all this stuff down and gets all the details in it, so.
Thank you. I have to say that looking at item two, I would actually like to see what it looks like when the Bike Ped Commission suggests recommendations, reviews, and monitors the general plan mobility element. I'd like to follow our municipal code more closely there and see what they have to inform the council. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else has questions?
No questions.
No questions? I think I have something to propose, but so maybe I will make my piece first. That may be more efficient in the interest of time. So... Okay. I will share my screen. Your place. Okay. So here, we do... We are not proposing this item just out of the blue. We are facing some gaps in our decision-making process that we have... The council approves CIP projects that often gets approved, reviewed only by one or two meeting, and often the project is... We allocate funding, often it's $1 million to a few million dollars, and based on one paragraph description, okay, we are going to install bike paths from here to there. At the time of approval, we didn't know what would be exactly included, although the staff assume when they make the budget estimation, they have some idea, but that usually will not be shared. So eventually, the council or the public also find out there would be lane removal or removal of right turn, right turn, or removal of parking, or signal changes that will increase delay. And these kind of plans are usually reviewed by Bike Ped. But normally, the agenda packet does not even include the design being considered. So the public or even the council does not know what's constructed until it's already constructed, not considered constructed. And then, for example, also that when Bike Ped... I think Bike Ped Commission is very important. They are expert in their expertise. However, there are often other options, like concrete barriers versus other more flexible options, or also cheaper options, that other cities are using, but then somehow they were never considered by our Bike Ped Commission. And for example, recently, you have the floating bus islands. Turns out, this is an option that's already recommended by Bike Ped, but now VTA is not recommending it because it's test proven to put pedestrians in danger, especially those are vision impaired. And other cities are removing those. And when we install crosswalk and we only think about, oh, pedestrian wants to close cross here or there. If you think about only pedestrian or bike path, a lot of times you are ignoring the needs of drivers. Then that... We might put crosswalk in dangerous locations, such as the crosswalk near Blue Pheasant, because it's at the downhill. And then that, when we ignore the needs of drivers, we put pedestrian and bike in danger too. And because right now, there is no process in current decision-making process for the public, even the council, to know what would be the impact on other modes of transportation. So that's the issue. And I never meant to say we would not want Bike Ped. I think Bike Ped has very specific purpose, like this is a mission adopted by Bike Ped Commission on the Bike Ped Commission website, adopt with their mission is about safety and region zero, safer corridor, and all supportive of that. And then I looked at the functions and powers of City Planning Commission. I find out somehow it's very vague. It says review, revise, review. And then, as a result, when a planning commission would like to make a recommendation to the council, somehow we were told that the planning commission cannot do this, cannot do that. That's another issue that I think we need to solve. So I looked at what the Palo Alto Planning and Transportation Commission does. Palo Alto has Planning Transportation Commission and a Bike Ped Committee reporting to staff. The members are appointed by staff, it seems. So in the Palo Alto municipal code, you can see it's very clear that the Planning Transportation Commission make recommendations on development facility and transportation. And it's like almost every item is make recommendations, make recommendations. And the last bullet is provide advice on any matter pertaining to land use and transportation systems. So I kind of hope that we are making it more clear that the Planning Commission does make recommendation on council, to the council, not just review. So as for the structure, I think I was warming up to the option number three, that we consider a transportation commission that consider all modes of transportation. And then I started to look up what structure other cities use, then I find out, actually, Palo Alto, Walnut Creek, Alameda, and Berkeley all have this structure. It's Bike Ped Committee or Commission advises planning or transportation commission. And then transport... Oh, sorry. And then transportation commission or Bike Ped Commission advises planning, which in turn advise the council. So there is a three-layer structure. I thought maybe that makes more sense. So it's kind of like we will have recommendation from Bike Ped, from the Bike Ped perspective, which is important. But we would also then, their advice will come to Transport... Planning Commission, that will look at from other aspect of overall impact to the city. And maybe they would disagree on their recommendation. Fine, I think to the council, then we can... If they agree, maybe a project can just go through. If they disagree, maybe then they should come to the council. I think I didn't ask questions, so I'm using my question time for presentation. And then the San Carlos and Mission Vallejo, this is all in the staff supplemental report. They pointed out that San Carlos, they have merged Bike Ped with planning in 2022, and the staff supplementary process commissioners are generally well-versed informed regarding transportation-related matters, even when it's a planning commission. And then in Mission Vallejo, they also have only planning and transportation commission. They don't have any Bike Ped Commission. And this commission considers all traffic matters, even including traffic enforcement. So here comes the question. If we consider the structure where some project might need to go to two commission, I was struggling with that. Yet, we don't want to spend too much staff time. This would add cost to the city. However, if we don't slow down and consider aspects beyond Bike Ped focus, we might make a decision that will be very costly to undo, such as what San Mateo has recently done. They spent one half million dollar to install bike paths, and now they are... The entire council unanimously want to remove that, which will cost $2 million, plus they have to return the grant funding they have received. This is all because they didn't hit to the vehement pushback from the community, or that community were... Didn't know about the project. So it's worthwhile to slow down and listen and consider different aspects. So here is the motion that I am proposing. First, no change to the Bike Ped Commission Charter in the municipal code. No change in name or function, let's keep it. And we need that for... To meet the MTC requirement, I think the current structure does meet the MTC requirement. But then I would like to clarify what's the function for Planning Commission. So that's 2.32070, that's the Planning Commission. So I'd like to add an item that's just... This is what Planning Commission already does, but I want to clarify, it's just not review, make policy recommendations to the city council to implement the general plan, including but not limited to elements that's in the general plan, in land use, mobility, environmental health, safety, and infrastructure, such as wireless, I said. The smallest, I think, tower used to be on Planning Commission. Item three, assess the proposed projects for potential environmental impacts. I think we used to have the Environmental Review Committee with Planning Commission members, and that was already there, but I just want to clarify that. And CQ also evaluate traffic impact. So then the Planning Commission can consider the mitigation measures. And then number four, make a recommendation on transportation-related planning documents, such as vision master plans. The commission shall consider the impact on economic and community development, including environmental, aesthetic, public safety, level of service for traffic, and safe routes to school. Why economic development? Because as we have heard, if the parking along car dealerships are removed, what's impact on the economy? I think that's things that we need to know. If a shopping mall does not have enough parking, what's impact on the city revenue? And make recommendation on... Number five, make recommendations on planning projects, including CIP projects. Evaluate impacts on all modes of transportation, including but not limited to vehicular traffic, transportation management plans. Many development projects will have those, and parking capacity and transit options, including shuttles. And number six, provide advice on any matter, including policies and programs pertaining to land use, planning, and transportation systems affecting the city. So this is my motion. Yeah, that's it. Do anyone would like to second it?
I'd like to discuss it.
Well, I'll second it so you can discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
But can I make a... You want to make a comment first, and I'll go after you?
Okay.
No, I just want to keep it very brief. You know, the motion has merit, mayor, but we haven't had the chance to look at it in detail. So I am suggesting that we make any changes to the actual policy or what you're calling the policy recommendations. Do it at another time, but in the interest of time and interest... It's close to midnight. Our job today is to make a decision on the commission oversight of transportation matters. And if we could just limit ourselves to what stays with the Bike and Ped Commission and what are we doing with the Planning Commission, I think that would be more efficient. My personal opinion is that the proposal to make any changes is quite unnecessary, and we appear to be finding a solution to a non-existent problem, really, and appeasing a very small group of people who have made their biases against bikes and pedestrians very clear. There really has... Nothing has happened that can precipitate this change. And while I commend you for going into all these details about tweaking the policy and tweaking the language, I suggest we do continue this at another time. For now, we either go with a do-nothing option, or we go with option number three, which is basically keeps the functions of both the commissions as they are, except expanding the definition of transportation for transparency's sake and for the sake of clarity.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify. And of course, we are not making the ordinance change today. The staff will have to bring this back with modification to the actual ordinance, and they might make wording changes that make sense, like they have done for the... By draft resolution for the vision study. So of course, this is... It will come back. But we have heard one hour of comments today, so do we want to do that again? Council member one.
Yeah, let me add a few comments here. First of all, just to be clear, I am a biker. I trained in a velodrome as a kid. I also biffed many times, and that's with no brakes, and that's not fun. But I'm also a driver most of the time. But I'm also a driver most of the time and sometimes at a pedestrian, which I could be more of. So this is the core point for the vast number of us here in Cupertino. We do drive and we do bike and we do walk, but the percentages of that is really important. And we often don't take care, take that into account when we think about our policies. We can't continue to impact 36,000 to 38,000 drivers in the area for the convenience of a very few, especially during commutes. The parents of the students need to get their kids to schools quickly, make their commutes, drop off elderly, appointments, run errands, and come back from work. Yes, students also need to bike safely and they, they need bike safety. Vehicular traffic and safety are not mutually exclusive. And I'd like to correct Ms. Lindskog's false assertion that I believe that a number of acceptable incidents is okay. I've never said that. And I'm not going to comment on her tax on planning chair row. She needs to get together with them and meet and work it out. That's how we do it here in Cupertino. By the way, we spent so much time on that issue, that's why we're also here at that late hour, so let's remember that. But the continuation of spreading those false assertions and, you know, should stop, I mean, the walk bike newsletters, which I also subscribe to, it's, it's a great way to recruit, but let's be truthful. I'm glad we have a bike lobby. This is active. It's very important. One of my best friends, you probably would know him, I won't name him so he doesn't get in trouble, but he's active in the space. And we also have a massive majority that is not included in those conversations. This is not a power grab by one commission or commissioner. Impacted by road diets, inappropriate bike lane placement, loss of parking, no free right turns, the remarks today show a lack of awareness that their impact on, on our, on our drivers is endemic and if not deliberate among bike advocates. The policies don't take into account for fines, for violations like e-bikes on sidewalks, running over pedestrians, bikers moving in the wrong directions, bikers running lights. I see this every day. I'm probably going to start a blog with a video of all this. These are issues with cars and drivers too. They hit pedestrians and pedestrians sometimes aren't there. And, and we know that. There's merit in the vision zero plans. I'm not against that either. However, we need to think about the hours, the mass majority of how we get from point A to B. That's the issue. Given the salaries of everyone here, it's a huge drain on time, which is money. We need balance and right now we have a very loud minority voice that has had their outsized influence. The vast majority inconvenience here have not been accounted for. In fact, they are very often ignored and attacked under a guise of moral superiority without accounting for the number of hours wasted by the drivers stuck in traffic, spewing pollutants, and adding to our environmental concerns. Cities like Palo Alto, while not perfect, are often seen and used as an, as a example of, of great models. And so, you know, by integrating their complex issues of planning, transportation, infrastructure, and of course modes like biking, walking, cars, and of course, future vehicles, transport, you know, buses, we can learn a lot as our residents speak up. A systems approach is key. There are many modes. We can't make decisions in isolation. Land use and transit are more and more tied. Traffic needs to be addressed by all modes. We do not need to get rid of the bike pad commission. Listen to that again. We do not need to get rid of the bike bed commission. There's great expertise. You guys have spent a lot of time, a lot of investment, we have a lot of dollars coming from there, and I think that's important. I recommend option two, with the bike pad commission or committee reporting to a planning commission like Palo Alto. ATP, vision zero, safe routes to school should be ultimately approved by the planning commission and moved up. There is no move here to get rid of the bike pad commission. In fact, we want them to actually provide that expertise. But there is a move and a very important move is put planning and transportation together because when they're not together, we actually create a lot of problems. We don't want a San Mateo. There are so many cities around the country right now that are in the process of removing bike lanes, replacing parking, because decisions were made quickly without proper public input. And that's why we spent the time today to listen to all your input. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you making a friendly amendment or making a motion to add that back pad report to planning?
I am for option two.
So you are for option two.
I would like to do option two. We can worry about the planning issues later as council member Mohan mentioned. Let's just focus on that piece. I would advocate for option two, bike pad reports to planning. Planning has ultimate authority on ATP, vision zero, and any other initiatives that are there. I don't know if there's a second.
Anyone else would like to comment?
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. So at the start of your motion, you had the do nothing actually at the start. So I agree with that, but I would add that we need to have the bike pad commission do item two of the municipal code and do, do that review, which is for them to suggest recommendations, review, and monitor the city's general plan transportation element.
Is that already in the municipal code?
Yes, but they haven't done it.
Yes, so we don't need to change that.
Oh, no, it's not a change. We're just ensuring that they actually provide that function. And that we're prudent with sending items to planning and the bicycle pedestrian commission. We listen to staff recommendations for when a joint meeting or a separate meeting on the same topic makes more sense. And that we consider improving the municipal code regarding the planning commission as a separate item, because I do think there are a lot of really valid points, but one of the items in particular, I'm, I'm not sure that the, the planning commission has the expertise. It might have been item five, it read almost like some elements of doing a transportation study for, for an EIR. So we need to think about that. And, and I do think it's a separate item there.
I'll, I'll second that. I, I like all of the, the suggestions. I would also hope that you might accept as a friendly amendment that since the thing that seems to have precipitated our getting here is a question about how the, the Deansa Boulevard buffered bike lane project came to be and the fact that a number of people felt surprised by that particular realignment is what sort of policy we should use that would increase transparency around those types of projects. I don't think we need to wholesale restructure how we handle our commissions in order to get to that point. Would you accept that?
I'm not sure I understand it.
Ah, okay. So as, as I see it, going back to the first slide that Mayor Chow had, there was some narrative surrounding how we got here, right? Which seems to center around the Deansa Boulevard bike lane project and the elimination of a lane. That, at least anyway, that is my perception of how we got to this point.
It's a good example. Okay, so what's the solution?
So I think the solution is, is, is to, to ask staff to develop a policy recommendation with regard to how we surface these things at an appropriate point of development so that nothing feels like a surprise to the public.
Okay, so you're suggesting like an improved pathway for transparency with regards to, I, you know, I think staff after this experience has, can probably predict where things are going to become contentious in the future. So yeah, it's probably pretty easy to spot now, right turn lanes, protected bike lanes, all these things kind of.
Yeah.
So how, so how would, how are you wording your friendly amendment?
As a direction to the city manager to develop additional policy on increased transparency around a specific set of class of projects, as you've described.
As described on this slide?
Yes.
Okay.
I accept.
So, so mobility element will be considered by back pad. Would that element also be considered by planning like other element?
The planning commission has the purview of the entire general plan. I've always felt like they could look at any section that they wanted to.
Yeah, so we are not removing that, right? Just want to clarify. Okay.
Let me ask a question about, sorry about that. Let me ask a question about how this would handle. Let's take a great example. We lost the lane on Deansa. Let's use the example that council member Fu and talked about. Who put, who had input at the council level for that? No, it went straight to bike pad staff and then no one had any input, no awareness from it. Okay, no one is probably extreme, but a lot of the folks that are advocating for it on the bike pad side did. But the vast majority of people who were impacted as drivers didn't have any kind of input. Let's talk about the right, free right turns on northbound from Stevens Creek going westbound, northbound on Wolf and coming down. You're about to take those all out on Deansa the same way and on Wolf. Who gave permission to do that? Oh, it's in the vision plan, it's in the ATP, it's in this, right? Most residents didn't even have input in there. A very select few of people who have the time and energy to push for that is impacting 35,000 to 38,000 drivers. How do we address that? Where does it go? Is that something that shows up onto, you know, council instead? That, that's the question.
Yeah, I think that's kept, kind of captured on this slide. These are the issues that we hope staff can propose a solution to address. For example, floating bus island, we didn't even know is already in the plan, which was considered by back pad commission back in 2022. And now because VTA changed their recommendation, we are like going to remove them. But none of us even know it's in there. And now I went to look for the plan, it's not on the website. So these are the, I think the staff know, if the staff can propose a solution to address these issues, I'm, I welcome that. But can we also then include a potential revision to the, so, so you are saying that we don't want to consider this today, but then we could bring back another item that consider, to clarify.
Um, mayor?
These items for in terms of planning commission, so you are okay?
Yeah.
So can we make that part of the motion that we would?
We have that in there and consider improving the municipal code regarding the planning commission as a separate item. So that would need to, to come back. Mike, so I.
Can we include considering these items in the list? I think these are already part of planning. For example, traffic demand management, if planning doesn't consider that, who else? There is no other body. And they are the ones that approve development project, make recommendation, not approve, make recommendation on development project, right? So then they are also the one that evaluates EIR, the mitigation before it comes to the council.
I would add one thing, but I know you've been trying to, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure we stay on topic. I mean, most of this is policy changes relating to the planning commission. Let's just focus on what we need to do today, which is how do we deal with transportation matters?
These are all related to transportation matters.
Right, and, but we also said that details would be discussed at a later stage.
So yeah, that's why I want to clarify with the motion include, we would bring back an item to consider this. Five items I have proposed for consideration.
I would be okay with any of this if we were clear that planning is supreme on transportation. I mean, I think that's what we're headed. I mean, you don't need to make all these amendments here, but I think it's really important to clarify, bike pad's role ultimately reports to trans, to planning. If, if that's not clarified, I think we're missing the point.
That's, I'm, through the mayor, I'm not advocating for the bike pad commission to report to the planning commission and I, I.
Why not?
Right, and I wouldn't either.
Why not? I think that they need to be autonomous and report to the council and not, and I think, I would feel pretty demoralized if I was on the bicycle pedestrian commission, reporting to the planning commission and then the planning commission up, especially considering, you know, I, I was more wanting to see safe routes to school merged into the bicycle pedestrian commission in some way, because I'm concerned about the costs. And I'd also like essentially the bikes, bike pad commission to look at those costs and, and make some comments about that if there's anything that we can do, because it's been growing so much. And also, what are we going to do with our shuttle moving forward? If somebody would like to take that on, if the bicycle pedestrian commission would like to take that challenge on for future funding, I think that's a great project. But I, I think there is enough for them to do and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to demoralize them by taking away their authority.
My concern is not that. My concern is there's no governance on those types of public works projects, especially the spending, the approval. So even the recommendations going through and it's not necessarily coming to council for final approval on those details.
We, we approve all, all spending. The bike pad commission is not, is not approving spending.
We get very limited plans and details when they're presented.
One paragraph description.
Yeah, and we can, and we can solve that with different policy.
Yeah, that I hope the staff will propose something to solve that issue.
We have plans that don't take into account holistic approach, which means we don't even have fines when people break these things. We don't enforce those. I mean, if you're going to build a comprehensive traffic plan, you should find pedestrians, find, you should also find bikers and find automobiles who are breaking the law. I mean, we, we only have enforcement. Everything is about taking, creating, well, anyways, I'll let you continue.
So I'd like to say that Palo Alto, Walnut Creek, Alameda, and Berkeley, maybe more, have the bike pad committee reporting to planning, planning advice council. And so that structure has been used in other cities. I don't think it's demoralizing. However, I didn't include that in my motion because I like to hear different opinions. So maybe the bike pad will have, just like the vision study, maybe back pad will have their recommendation from their perspective. That might be different from planning. As a council member, when I make decision, I would like to hear both and then we present council for that. And, but if they tend to agree, maybe the item doesn't need to come to the council. If they disagree, then maybe the item come to the council and we listen to both. So that's why I didn't include that in what I had proposed, yeah.
One comment, mayor. I mean, there will always be exceptions and I'm okay with an occasional issue going from bike pad to, to planning commission. But that's, that is not what we are, should be focusing on. We, we, let's leave the bike pad as it is, let's leave the planning commission as it is for now, because really they, you can point to the floating islands as a, as a problem. But, but really they, we are not looking at, from a holistic point of view, we are just pointing at something here, the right, right turn signals and the Deansa bike lanes. We are also discounting the fact that anytime we issue, we involve two commissions, efficiency, there's an efficiency impact, there's a staffing impact, and everything slows down. We are not Palo Alto, we are not Berkeley, we are much smaller, and we can get things done efficiently without going through, you know, all this sort of bureaucratic measures. So my suggestion is let's.
I thought the current motion on the table would be involving two commissions.
Well, in a, in a limited way.
Thank you. So when I'm, when I'm looking at this, the specifics that, that you have in your motion, mayor, with regards to in particular, like looking at item five, I would just leave it at the first sentence because it, it's getting too particular about what the planning commission would be doing. Having served on the planning commission along with council member Wong, it, one area that was particularly frustrating was that we would only evaluate the CIP items for their consistency with the general plan. And we had always wanted to kind of weigh in on those particular projects and, and provide some opinion on that. And so what I like about that is this, it has the, the possibility of being able to provide that input.
Like evaluating impacts, but you don't want the specifics.
Right, I would just leave it on the, the first line, making recommendations, that's going to automatically require you to make those evaluations. And so I, I, so each one of these, they would need a little bit of adjusting because.
Yeah, definitely. This is just an initial proposal.
So that's why I just say, consider improving the municipal code regarding the planning commission as a separate item. And I, we need to talk to the attorney regarding item three with regards to CQ. And unfortunately, the way the law's been changed, we're seeing those CQ documents so few and far between, everything's getting a notice of exemption. Got hundreds of them now, so.
Can we make a friendly amendment to consider the responsibilities and also consider these points raised and evaluate them at least? The staff can make recommendation based on what they think of these proposals.
Yeah, I, I think that, that Vice Mayor Moore's verbiage, the way that it's written, encourages staff to make recommendations to us. encourages staff to make recommendations to us on how they might improve the function of the Planning Commission. So I feel like that's already captured there. I don't want to speak for Vice Mayor Moore, but I feel like we probably have a similar, I don't want to call it objection to the motion that you've made with regard to the Planning Commission, but it does feel very prescriptive, and therefore that we're kind of getting the cart before the horse here. So I'm happy to, you know, evaluate what it is that the Planning Commission is doing, but I think that we should be doing that in the full light of day, right?
Okay, so.
Through the mayor, so that staff would understand that they would be evaluating your suggestions as overarching topics.
Okay.
And being, when they bring it back, that they're being, you know, taking care that, with that. Okay, makes sense.
So, City Clerk, could you show the final motion?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure. So, Mayor, I have your motion. Make this bigger. I have your motion verbatim. Councilmember Wong weighed a friendly amendment to.
Well, how did you get my motion verbatim?
I copied it into Chat GPT.
Oh.
And, oh, I'm sorry. So I don't know what's going on with my screen here.
Who seconded the Councilmember, Vice Mayor's motion? I think.
Councilmember Fruin.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know, so Vice Mayor, please let me know if you agree with this. It's rough, but. Yes, okay. So agrees with the start of the mayor's motion to do nothing initially, but we need, but we need the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission to carry out item one of the municipal code, which includes reviewing, making recommendations, and monitoring the city's general plan transportation element. This responsibility is already in the code, but it hasn't been done. So, so no changes are needed, just ensuring the commission actually performs it. We should be careful about sending items to planning, and the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission should follow staff guidance on when a joint meeting or a separate meeting is appropriate. We should consider updating the municipal code regarding the Planning Commission as a separate item, since the commission may lack expertise for some aspects of a transportation study.
I believe she was mentioning the mobility element.
It's actually called the transportation element, and it should be called the mobility element. I think we need another, a word, we, after, and the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission should follow staff about, okay, we should be careful about sending items to planning and the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. And we should follow staff guidance on when a joint meeting. So it's, I don't want it to get confused that the Bike Ped Commission follows staff guidance. It's council, we're going to listen to staff, and they suggest where things should go.
But I thought we will, the staff will propose, the staff guidance will be based on something the council will, the staff will propose how they will handle, address those issues I have raised, right?
Mayor, that can be part of the, you know, if we develop additional policy.
Because the issue right now is the staff guidance is in conflict with the council.
Though you mentioned, oh, mobility?
Issues I raised, I hope staff propose something that will, the council will approve based on staff's proposal to address those issues. Then the guidance will be based on the council's direction, not staff's guidance.
Our challenge is the fact that the bike lobby meets more with the staff than the vehicle lobby, and that's really creating the issue and the disparity and the thing. I'm not saying bikers are not drivers, but I'm saying they're taking a very one-sided point of view that doesn't account for all forms of mobility, and it still doesn't address that issue.
Why, no, I think this would address it if we have staff propose a proposal to address the issues that I had on my first slide. Then that proposal will be approved by the council in writing. Then we have something in writing that staff and council can refer to on how we move forward. Yeah.
Mayor, to clarify the motion then, can we, so I get the clear direction from council that staff needs to develop additional policy on the increased transparency on projects, and we'll bring that forward for council consideration. Does council also want staff to recommend?
And that, I think the policy also should include then when a project will go to planning, so that it's in writing, because when it's not in writing, that's when we have this back and forth.
We can include those as staff recommendations.
And then when it's in writing, approved by the council, then we won't be, we have this conflict, right?
I would be inclined to support that, but I would ask for a moratorium on all projects at this moment until this is solved.
That moratorium on projects like.
Inactive, before you break, dig ground, before you break another lane, before you take another road diet, before you stop another free right turn, let's solve this problem.
So Councilmember Wong, I think the ATP is going to come up for council considerations, depending on the.
But we're already digging. You guys are starting a project right now on Deansa.
That's the past council direction that staff has, so we will.
I would like a moratorium before we, until we get there, because this is, this is why people are angry, right? This is why people, when we knocked on doors, they were angry. That was the number one issue when we hit on doors. What's with all the road diets? Why come, how come there's no input from drivers, right? How come there's no input for autonomous vehicles? How come there's no input for other modes of transportation? Why are there no fines for when people break these laws, right? Why are we inviting this problem? Why are bikers still on the sidewalks when we have bike lanes? None of those issues are being addressed.
So we do have a motion on the floor, and it would be up to the motion maker and the secondor if they would be willing to accept that.
Do you accept the moratorium?
So we have the motion on the floor.
Okay. Can I clarify on the motion about the staff proposal for transparency? And it's not just transparency. I think it's also decision-making process. Because transparency sometimes just mean we'll post things. But then the decision-making process might still have gaps. So if the staff can propose something, that would be great. And then also include when the staff will decide a project would have a joint study session, when that's necessary, so if we can have a more clarity on that, that would be great.
I already conceive of the motion as including that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I've got that clarity from what council wants right now.
So I think the Vice Mayor's motion includes that.
The language doesn't exactly have that. Does it have that?
I don't know what section you're referring to, Mayor.
Scroll down, Kirsten.
Yeah, scroll down the section where.
More substitute motion.
And the friendly amendment.
Last bullet on that one.
This is where we are asking the staff to develop policy, right? Increase transparency and address decision-making process. And then address, I guess, address the decision-making process for projects that also include when a project would have a joint.
I think we understand that. I mean, right now, what I'm seeing is basically keep the Bike Ped Commission the same. Ensure the Bike Ped Commission is reviewing the general plan, mobility element. Come back with policy recommendations that would include things such as joint meetings, lane removals, processes. We kind of have an understanding of where you want to go with this, so I think we can take a good crack at it, and then you can always put more input on top of that as we get to that point. And then I think the last item was to look at modifications on how to enhance the Planning Commission code sections. And that's kind of how I've read things to this point.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, all right.
Awesome, so let's vote.
On the substitute motion, correct, Mayor?
Yeah, substitute motion, and with the friendly amendments that you have listed shown on screen.
Okay. The substitute motion as amended carries with Wong voting no.
Okay, so we won't have time for the other two items. That will be continued to the next meeting, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for pushing through this.